Okay, before we go any further, please speak into your microphones because there are people listening remotely. And we have gotten some complaints that they can't understand everything that everybody's saying. And the math certainly doesn't help that process, so you need to speak into the mic. Okay, can you stand for the bunch of allegiance, please? So our first presentation is by our superintendent. And he's going to talk about our English Language Arts Instruction Post-Secondary Partnerships. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryanus. Thank you to the board. Welcome to our administrators and to members of our community. My purpose tonight is to talk about some educational programs. And perhaps a path forward that we can take as we look forward to planning, strategic planning for our students. So I kind of report tonight breaking barriers. Because that is what we are charged to do for our children. To identify barriers that our kids face and find ways to break those barriers. So the purpose of this presentation is to identify barriers to student success, build support around the first step action, set broad goals, build barrier-breaking programs, begin a conversation and discussion on the community, and take the first public step in what will surely be a year's-long initiative. And this effort derives from Franklin Boardist Ask Me to Live. In being hired here, all superintendents are required to have performance objectives. And we need the board has approved two. Firstly, during the 2021-2022 school year, the superintendent, in cooperation with stakeholders, will conduct an analysis of K-12 instructional practices that present interim and final recommendations to the board and community no later in June 2022. I don't think 2022 and June is early enough. We have to move. So tonight, I'm doing this. And then the other one is during the 2021-2022 school year, superintendent, in cooperation with stakeholders, will individually enhance and develop these partnerships to increase educational workforce opportunities for all students, especially those in grade speed. Superintendent will present interim and final recommendations to the board no later in June 2022. So if we're looking to break barriers, I think the first thing we have to ask ourselves is what are they? Right? And certainly, there are many, too many to list. But as we look to focus academic programs, the thought is that we would identify major ones. And so I'm suggesting two major barriers that exist for our students that we can focus on trying to break. First barrier is, and one of them comes at the end, of our students as they're graduating, others become as they walk through our doors. So the first barrier, if anyone who's had students in college or goes to college, I think would agree with this, is that students and families encounter high costs, time-intensive, inefficient, and often low-value post-secondary options. That's a barrier. Our kids face barriers when they walk out this door to higher education, to gain full employment, fulfillment in their lives, family-sustaining work. There are enormous barriers that stand in our kids' way. And those are things that we need to focus on secondly. The second major barrier I'd like to address is the fact that the opportunity to acquire life-fulfilling language arts competency profoundly diminishes after third grade. I hope to tell you tonight that if we do not have our students reading well when they get past third grade to third grade, they may never, ever read well. And the implications to that are lifelong disadvantages in profound ways that affect them. And so we have a very brief opportunity to do right by our kids because it is an enormous barrier for a child, a lifelong barrier, if they're not reading well by third grade. So that's something that we have to address. So those are two barriers that I think are very real, that I think all of us have experienced in some ways or another. And our focus has to be on how do we go about breaking those barriers? So how will we do it? How will we empower students? If we're not doing anything for anybody, how will we empower people to break those barriers? And here are my thoughts, two things that we have to do. We must have the best post-secondary and community partnerships of any public school district in Pennsylvania. And we must be the best public school district in Pennsylvania in teaching our youngest students how to read and write. That's where we need to go, in my estimation, as far as we engage in this conversation tonight. And so I want to begin to tell you why I think these barriers are so great. And so we're going to start with the reason that post-secondary partnerships are so necessary. And the fact is, and I believe this, it sounds odd or contrituitous, but higher ed, no doubt, is a barrier. Yes, it's a source of opportunity for some such segments of students. Higher education is a barrier. Here's why I think that. Remember varsity blues, all right? Remember that scandal where Hollywood people and millionaires were caught rioting institutions to get their kids in, right? Well, that was a distraction, right? It caught people's attention about some abuses at the higher, but that's not the problem. It's not the problem. So I want to take four minutes to show you a brief video that kind of defines what we're looking at as far as these barriers. Why do I watch that?
There's a widespread belief that the job market is just waiting for employers and officials even more than graduates. It's a lie with the high-paying jobs in the front office. They just need to go to college, right? Well, the data tells a different story. Charts like this imply correlation between higher income and additional education. Showing that average, that a person with a university degree earns more money than a average person without any support. This reliance on averages and perceived higher earnings for a candidate's four-year degree has fueled a tougher moral philosophy, causing educators and parents to encourage limited universities, any university, to major in anything in pursuit of social freedom and financial prosperity. This belief has increased the college and university enrollment rate to all-time high. Resulting in sixty-six percent of high school graduates in the secondary enrolling in higher education right after high school. That's two out of three. The problem is that that means for students to attend college. The problem is too many students who initially are not succeeding. For most college students, it takes too long and they simply visit. Others are struggling too much, or they discover they picked the wrong major or attended the wrong institution for that, since most students are taught that university degree guarantees access. Many delay their current plan at the college graduation. Resulting in sixty-two percent of students who are in eighth feel disengaged because they don't see the connection, they endorse reinforcement. And so today, only a quarter of those that initially enrolled will finish a high school. You see, our educational system is very well-intentioned, but incredibly disaligned. The pendulum has swung too far towards college preparation at any cost and away from skeleton. We even encourage college women culture is a little bit of an issue with university tenants decorating second-grade classrooms. And we spend an exorbitant amount of time in high school dedicated to college. Education is core to our economy. But to guide our educational systems and maximize future income, we must understand this disalignment between education and our workforce. At some point in history, we have transitioned from asking the more important question of what knowledge and skills do you need to employ to contribute to your community to now suddenly asking where are you going to college? When in reality, not every degree is direct preparation for employment. With rising education costs, a shrinking job market, and over saturation of some academic majors in the workforce, graduates take positions that would not require education yet received, and often with debt, they come out of it. In fact, this disalignment, which will decrease the job skills, causes half of university graduates to be underemployed in what are called gray collar jobs. And thirty-three percent of college graduates are still underemployed well in their thirties. We know that success in today's world depends on aligning the students and academics with both their skills and available job opportunities. Yet there is growing evidence of a skills gap in which many areas are not receiving the essential skills that are needed. Recently, a survey was conducted to find out if the skills found in the local workforce match the skills that employers needed in the economy. We found that employers experienced difficulties finding applicants with strong technical skills, as well as problem-solving skills, applied math skills, and basic technical training. Unlike three generations ago, having hands-on skills and perfecting what you could at can be more valuable in today's economy than getting a degree in something simply to teach them. In fact, when hiring, business leaders say that candidates' knowledge and applied skills in a specific field are more important factors than where the candidate went to school or the college agent. The economy and the world have dramatically changed. In 1960, when taking into account all jobs in the American economy, twenty percent requiring a higher degree or higher. Twenty percent were technical jobs requiring skill training. And fifty percent were classified as unskilled. Oh, what's the right percentage to be laboring to manage tomorrow? Georgetown University predicts only thirty-three percent of all jobs will require a higher degree or more in the future. While the overwhelming majority will be highly skilled jobs requiring professional and technical training at the credential or associate's degree level. The true ratio of jobs in our economy is one to seven. For every occupation that requires a master's degree or more, approximately two professional jobs require a university degree. And there are over half a dozen jobs requiring in one university degree or two degree degrees. And each of these conditions are in very high school areas, patterned in recent events. So while most jobs in the future will require some education and training in high school, the majority occupations will not require a bachelor's degree or more. It was the same in 1960, the same that you found, and will be the same in 2020. Very well-intentioned, the reason.
Now, we'll show you the rest and come back to a meeting later on. But that's the part that I wanted to talk about now. I'll get back to my presentation. And when we talk about this alignment and time and challenge, it's actually much worse than what is shown in that video. So let me begin by talking about barriers with respect to efficiency of cost for our kids as they move on to higher ed. Tuition is increasing at breathtaking rates. Student debt has exploded. And outcomes, gray collar jobs, unemployment, not graduating, not getting credentials, have been both devastating and inequitable to our young people, creating tremendous, tremendous barriers. So here's some examples of how college tuition has exploded over time. You see this line in the middle, some may see it, this is inflation. Inflation over this time period has gone at about fifty-five percent from 1996 to 2016. We have, as a society, done an excellent job making TVs more available. We've done an excellent job making cell phones and toys and software more available. But we have also done an amazingly awful job at making higher education available. All right? We have just abused our young people, we've abused our families in looking at what higher ed has done with respect to increases in tuition. Like, okay, childcare has been out of control. Medical costs, yes, going through, but they pale in comparison to what has happened to college tuition and its partner in crime, textbooks. Anyone who's gone textbook today. So this is the same idea, but just brought up to 2020. Where you can see inflation at two-hundred-twenty-eight percent and college tuition increasing at eleven-hundred-and-eighty-four percent over time. That's a crime, what is happening. It's a crime what is happening. And how are those tuition dollars being spent? Colleges and universities compete with one another, not to make money, although the poor profits have been a recent development in this issue. But they don't compete with each other to make money, but for status and prestige. They buy things to increase their status in relation to their competitors. Not to pick on the Tigers, but this is a picture of the water park, the lazy river at Louisiana State University, that was paid for eighty-five billion dollars on student fees. And they're not alone. This is one example. I don't get it. There's a few graduates here I don't get. But this is just an example. And by the way, each slide, there's a link down here. And these are posted, you all have it, if anyone's interested in reading more. Each slide has a little link you can read more about these types of abuses or whatever it happens to be. But this is where the money goes. It's on me. I'm picking here, but it's just an interesting example, at least. So how much does college cost? Well, how much does it cost to fly to Florida? And it depends, right? It depends on how much they can give for you to pay that ticket price. There's no black fee, there's not ticket. Whenever you go there, they'll tell you what they'll sell you for. It might be more, it might be less, because it's designed to get as much money as they can out of you. And economics is called discriminatory pricing. And you'll read in the article, you can click on it, that colleges adopted a discriminatory pricing model. You know, when you fill out those financial aid forms and they tell you it's how much university can give to you? No, it isn't, all right? It's how much what? How much university can get from you, all right? Send your kids, right? And so here's just some examples, right, that people think. I put here some colleges that people may have, may not, you know, heard from. But Bloomsburg, for example, has an in-state rate of twenty-four thousand, an out-of-state rate of thirty-five thousand dollars. But forty-five percent of students there get financial aid with an average reward of eight thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. But on to Penn. Penn has a seventy-four thousand dollar sticker price. But forty-five percent of the students who go to Penn have an average grade of fifty thousand dollars. So how much does it cost to go to Penn? And that is as much as they can get from you, is the answer. And then the same thing is true of these other places. And then the point is that colleges have been designing themselves to extract as much money as possible from the kids and from the families on their own sticker prices and discount. And I would encourage any parent who's interested or is interested, go to collegedata.com. And they look, put into school and see what this is all about. And it really is a good source of data for students who are going on. So no surprise, right? When tuitions go through the roof, it's a fact is that students and families have become indebted, all right, to send their kids to school. And at this graph, the red graph indicates student loan debt from 2003 to 2018, from two-hundred-forty million to one-point-four-one trillion. And then the other, the other home equity has gone down. Credit card has been outstaying auto, has gone up, but not nearly as much. But the impact, the rising tuition rates over time, has been sending us, our families, our kids into debt. It's a generational debt. Many people are in their forties still paying off their college loans. And there's no doubt that it has impaired life choices for individuals, this weight of debt of college on their shoulders. But that's not even the worst of all. When it comes to barriers that we have to break as a school community. Efficiency of time. Look, we have, again, the same set of schools, their enrollments, very large numbers. What percent of applicants get accepted? So you see, Montgomery Community College, now Giddy Community College. Community colleges technically are a part of the solution. They take everyone, right? Their doors are open to everyone. Penn, on the other hand, has a ten percent acceptance rate. But you see that graduation rate, and this is not graduation rate in four years. Because you can't even find a statistic that says how many people graduated in four years. They don't even, every college program is a six-year program, and they won't even tell you how many graduated four. Right? And you see that many, many students are not completing. They're taking on debt, they're paying loans, they are not finishing. All right? And that's a terrible, terrible challenge that we face. And then with respect to places that are graduating, like Penn, for example, you have a ninety-six percent chance to graduate from Penn. But you're not getting in because they only take ten percent of their applicants. So the students who often enter college and never finish or finish years behind schedule, the most selective schools often have the highest completion rates, the least selective schools have the lowest. And, but you can't, this is hard to see, but there's a link here if you want to check on it. But the other problem is, depending upon your major, right, you may graduate and not be able to get a career, a failure-sustaining job. And this is a list of all the different majors that you can have and the percent of your yearly income that has to go to your student debt. And you can see that by picking some of the wrong majors, so to speak, right? You can get a job with your degree, but not be able to pay back your loans. Just add it to the problem on top of what previous challenges. And this is, this is the worst slide of all, in fact, single motivation, why we should be doing this. And that is that to succeed in college, it is better to be rich than it is to be smart. And here's just a crushing statistic. This comes from the Center for Educational Statistics. It's about as good an organization as we can, about hundreds of thousands of data points. And look, this little busy graph, but it's worth looking at. If you look across the top, it's math achievement. Low achieving students, middle achieving students, high achieving students. So the smartest students are here. And then going down, you have the lowest, meaning the poorest, and the most wealthy at the bottom. And the implication, this is no surprise, looking at this. If you are the poorest, but the smartest student, you're the poorest, but the smartest student, your chances of graduating in college are half that of the lowest achieving, yet wealthiest students. And so we say that's a barrier. And that's a barrier for the kids who need us most. And so this is where we must be looking to break barriers for our place. And so Georgetown University did a report, More to Win, School to Lose. It talks about the inequities in the college system and the barriers that kids face. College is now ardent crisis because they've not responded to this, the demographics have changed. And now they're struggling. And so what is it that we can do to break these barriers? First, we'll say that a model that we believe here is that college-level work or certificate-level work or accreditation work should be done and awarded in some of the high schools. That social equity and intelligent use of resources require that validated learning be appropriately recognized wherever it takes place. And so when our kids are doing college-level work here, we have to find ways to get them college-level credit. If kids are doing certificate-level work here in our building, we have to find ways to get them the credit to avoid the higher-end trap that so many face. And we will, and we will. So what we plan to do is we need to build partnerships and pathways with colleges and higher ed. Mrs. Arnold is working very hard on this. We've been with college presidents already. We have things in the works that we are looking forward to and for that will break some barriers, right? We have to build partnerships with the trades, such as unions, and develop sponsored partnerships. We have to build partnerships with local and regional industries, such as our regional medical care providers. And we have to communicate to all that Southern Lehigh and the students are ready to partner and break barriers. And I promise you, more to come. Tonight is just talking about identifying the problem and back to the solution. We're going to be coming back with results very, very soon. Any questions on this according to the second part that I'm almost done, really, according to the second part? Any questions? How about the board, maybe later, we'll be back. All right? We'll do questions later. All right, so the second part, we're talking about teaching kids to read. English and Language Arts, K-23. This report, you can get it, the Stanford Center for Educational Policy Analysis, talks about, it's just not white-saying it, right? There's some great research behind the importance of where kids learn to read. And again, we have the Stanford Center for Educational Policy. Again, this was breakfast before Georgetown University Policy. And then there's Leadership with Literacy. Anyone with this presentation can click. You'll see a whole host of research that will help inform anyone who's interested in reading about before someone read in third grade. So here's in a nutshell why we have to do this. The green line indicates successful readers over the course of grades one through three. The red line indicates struggling readers, as measured by one of many indicators. In this case, it's oral reading fluency. So we need to look at different spots along the way as these lines diverge. So here we have, right at the end, right at the beginning of second grade, after the end of first grade. Here we have in the winter of grade three, and here we have at the end of grade three. And so when you look at the beginning of second grade, if you look at the divergence between successful readers, right? You can remediate that difference, this distance between the readers. You can remediate that by about thirty or forty minutes a day of intervention in the classroom. So when kids are struggling, that really adds, and they're behind. If you plan thirty minutes a day, you could bring that person up, you could bring that student up. However, by the time you get to the end of third grade, when kids actually start to do more subject area stuff, less starting to read, you need two and a half to three hours of intervention in a day to bring a kid back up to grade level. And that's just, it's very hard, right? It's not a practical thing to be able to do. And so for a student, we have to pay him. At this point, that child will always and forever and perpetually be behind. They will be behind in school, they will fall behind socially. They'll be the students who are acting out in class because they're frustrated or bored. They will be the students who enter into the criminal justice system. They will be the people who are underemployed. So it is a barrier, a profound barrier for us attached students who are not reading at the very top of their game by the time they get through third grade. And so, good news is that it's well-known how to teach children to read and write. There's a link there, it's on the web. Our efforts here will require focus and time and resources. Southern Lehigh must undertake a long-term effort to support its teachers in this process. I'm happy to say that the supportive administration planning is underway. Our professional staff have been remarkably supportive in our early conversations of this effort. And we look forward to bringing back progress reports to the board. Each meeting in the coming months, talk about how we are progressing with this. And so that, again, it's not designed to say this is all things we are going through. This is why we believe that this is what we need to do as a community, all right? To break barriers for our place. So that was my report. I'm happy to take any questions. I'll just go back to the meeting.
I want to thank you, Ed, for all the very much of the next thing, kind of our shuffle. So I appreciate you undertaking this material.
I'd like to ask you about, talk about career pathways and university study. What about the trades and other specific items that are probably as important and have been neglected over time? I've been a big proponent in my company to... I've been a big proponent in my company to promote this. And so how does that fit into some of the things you're talking about there?
It very much does, Dr. May. And we're going to, we're going to come back. First, we're doing a lot of this stuff now. We're doing a lot of this, we're leaving it out. We're going to do much more. For example, it is my understanding that unions are always looking for apprentices, and we need to connect with people who are looking for apprentices. We need to find technical schools, like Penn College, for example, down in Williamsburg, who would be willing to partner with us. We need to connect with local chambers of Congress, local industry. We have a very wonderful agreement with St. Luke's for athletic training services that comes with support services as far as developing opportunities in the field, from physician down to sonographer and everything in, everything in between. So we recognize that while a lot of this we're talking about, the damage being done by higher ed, part of the way to avoid that damage is to find alternate pathways to meaningful life-sustaining fulfilling work. I think it comes exactly to the means that you are suggesting.
And then just one other thing. We talked about that, the first step is career awareness by students. And I think there could be a significant improvement in some of those outcomes by having better awareness of what careers are. You know, I've seen in the past, for example, an employee that had a sports management degree from one of the state schools, and was a painter, okay? You know, the, the, the opportunities, as you were mentioning, in, in certain degree areas are limited. And I just, I guess I wonder if there's a priority within this to make sure that students have some awareness of what these careers are. And, you know, it's, it's an economic analysis, and you need to understand the opportunities out there. Not everybody can be an NBA player, not everybody can be, you know, a marine biologist. So that's the other question I have, and then I'll stop.
Sure, no, I think in talking to Mrs. Garrelle about this, one of the things, one of the many different ways to approach this. We have a Spartan period at the high school where that is available for students. What about bringing in representatives from industries during the course of the day? Have our students interact and partner in ways that we would like to develop, just during the school day. And, and the other thing, as we reach out to develop these types of partnerships, we will be able to identify pathways. And then part of this effort will lead to communication. We want to go to eighth grade, the middle schools, and talk about what's these are established over time. All of the amazing things that you can do, right? You don't have to decide what you want to be in ninth grade. You can get in a pathway. Here is an opportunity for you, right? We, we've said, we want Dr. Don to use students sprinting across the parking lot to get to this high school. To begin, and we actually also talked about perhaps having one dual enrollment college-level course for eighth graders at the middle school. In a limited way to get started. And so those are the, the types of things that, once they're established, and if they're well communicated, then I, I think they'll, they'll build success.
And then just one, one other thing that I'd like to compliment the school district on is, I know for years there's been a job shadowing program within the school. And we've had, oh, we've had people from Southern Lehigh, my company, probably since, I don't know, 2012, 13, I don't know, something like that. And I think, you know, that program is great. And I hope that it continues and potentially expands as well as, you know, maybe some other initiatives with corporate partnerships.
Our, our approach is going to be that when you deal with Southern Lehigh students in our, our, our school district, it's a value proposition in that you will be getting the best students in the best organization in the Lehigh Valley. But that's a value to you and your organization. And we say in return, bring value to us. It's a two-way street. And that is through opportunities for our kids to break these barriers. So that's going to be our pitch, that's going to be our approach to anyone who will listen. And anyone who's not bringing value, we're, we're not interested in. But, but as many people, we'll be able to develop very, very strong partnerships. Because from my understanding, industry, in the community, is they don't know how to reach out to us, they're dying to do it. Because some of the problems that we're facing with respect to employment, they're facing too. And there are no better assets or resources than the kids at Southern Lehigh High School District.
Thank you, Dr. May.
I, I have one just additional question on literacy.
Dr. May?
Yes. Just near, dear to my heart, because I'm always a librarian, so it sort of has to be. Do you, and you may not have the answer, and that's, that's okay, we're helping you answer. But do you have, do you suspect, if you have some idea of, I think the public is generally pleased with our K-3 buildings, as best I can tell from feedback, having said that, obviously, we're here to improve and to do better in every way, to include literacy. Do you have an idea, is that a resource issue? Is that a process issue? What, what as a wave top, do you think we can bring? I don't think it's an heparin issue on the teacher's part, but maybe it's something else. And I was curious if you have, or is that something we're going to develop within the staff to get that answer? Or is that something that you have some ideas about when you talk about changes to our literacy program?
We very, very much have ideas about it. And we'll be relying on staff for sure. But here's the underlying issue, and I'll say it in a way. My, my job here is to look forward. But since you asked the question, I will, I will address it. Our teachers do amazing work at our elementary schools. But they do it without support from the school district. Like they, they find ways to teach reading well. But the, the candid answer is that if we were to ask, what do we do as an organization that is supporting our teachers to help a new second-grade teacher teach reading? Is that we introduce them to their colleague who also teaches second grade. And that's how they work. And how they do it is different in one school or another, in one classroom or another. They're all doing well, but through no fault of the school district. And so what I say is that we need to take that skill and those talents and those high motivations, and we need to support that network by giving resource and training and insight and guidance, and to listen to the challenges that they face so that, that we can say, in Southern Lehigh, this is how we teach reading. This is the best way to teach reading, here's why I would say it. And here's how we have organized our training. Here's how we've organized our materials and our supplies. Here's the approach we've taken over the years to build up, not too fast, because it has to be able to live well. And so, for example, I would say, right, we want to do something starting in September. We want a result to be able to implement. And I think that between now and then, it would be fair to say that we would adopt a new phonics program, at least in K through two. All right, that we could then implement and provide materials and training and support. So we're doing this across board, and then when a second-grade teacher comes in and asks about what we're doing, next year we can really give a precise, perfect answer about phonics. And then you can put on your calendar where you've been trained in this program a couple times. Then as we, as we grow it out, all right, we're going to have, again, the best program in Pennsylvania. Right now we have great teachers and great people. We do not have a great program, which we're going to get.
Thank you, thanks, Dr. May, for that. And the other, you certainly have brought support for both those initiatives, and I appreciate your leadership on it.
Thank you, Dr. May. At this point, we can't take the questions from the public. Let's move on to the, the rest of this meeting. Unless anyone from the board has any more comments or questions for the, for Dr. May on this topic. Okay, we have a number of visitor comments. Folks who have signed up to make comments. So we've all been sitting here since 6:30, and another meeting prior for a half hour. So what I'd like to do is go through the first 10 presenters. We'll take a break, and then we'll do the following. So Matt Greenwald. And if I pronounced your name wrong, please correct me when you get up to the podium.
And I just want to note for the public that item 10C, if you have done it, available, the public tends to remove.
So make sure the microphone on. Okay, evening, folks, my name is Matt Greenwald. I spoke two weeks ago. I had no intention of speaking that evening, and I really had no intention of speaking this evening either. I am a teacher here at the high school, done so for 23 years. I am a U N L A R as well. So the first last time that the board wanted some feedback, you know, from our teachers regarding how teachers were feeling, that's when Mrs. Faucher and I put out the survey to our staff. And as Mrs. Gannon, Mrs. Engler suggested, we had a great response, and, and we just, we just wanted feedback. I, I just wanted to clarify one or two things here this evening, just from some comments, and maybe some, you know, things that I've heard in the community. Mrs. Gannon, you said that almost 80% of our staff felt that this wasn't the opportune time for us to, to take the masks off. And then please understand, our, our teachers are not pro-mask. Okay, I am not pro-mask, and the teachers are not pro-mask. If you see me in the community, I wear a mask when I am told I have to wear a mask. I'm wearing one this evening. You'll also see me without a mask, because I, I am, I do not live in fear in any way. But what I will say is that all of our teachers in this district are 100% pro-education. And, and that's where the focus needs to be. You know, we want our students in front of us, not because we're afraid that they're going to be hospitalized. We're afraid they're not going to be in front of us to learn. It's, it's that simple. You know, if we have 25 students in a class, I want 25 students in my class. Not because I'm afraid we're going to shut the school down, because that's the most effective way to teach our students. So I, I just wanted everybody to understand, you know, our teachers, our staff, you know, we hate these masks as much as everybody else. You know, I'll take it off as soon as I walk out of this building. But we want our students in the building, and that's the effective way to do it. Again, I'm worried about our building shutting down because I can't teach. It, it's just, it's effective when our students are in front of us. You know, and when six of them are at home, and so on, you know, and the comment was made that our students are suffering from this. You know, we're taking it out on our students. We're not taking it out on our students, we're masking them right now because we love our students. You know, we love our students more than anybody could imagine. And we want to teach our students because that's what we love to do. So I just wanted to clarify that. And we're not, we're not fearful for our own selves, we're fearful for our kids and our students that are in front of us. So I don't want to run out of time, and I apologize. But I just wanted to clarify that, you know, for everybody, that we're doing, we're doing the best we can for our students. You know, we, we want them in the classroom in front of us. The only time I ever see, see my students sad is when they have to reach out to us and say that they've got to stay home for a week. You know, then they're sad, because they're not going to be in school with their peers and their teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Mayhan, the board president, Ryan, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to share with you on behalf of those with children in the district concerned about the short-term and the long-term effects that masking, distancing, and other relegations, that, effects have on our children. I want to first thank Dr. Christopher Waya for calling for the December emergency meeting. Your modified quarantine proposal has no doubt kept more children at school. Thank you for your forward-thinking approach and for validating the voters' overwhelming support for you in the, in the November election. We need to address the psychological, educational, and social damage that is being done to our children due to lockdown policies and mask use. The psychological damage cannot be understated. Throughout our nation, we are experiencing an unprecedented epidemic of suicide in children. We are seeing a significant surge in drug abuse in adolescents. We are having demonstrable drops in IQ and fundamental development milestones in the very young, upwards of 20 IQ points. Children have to see the faces, have to see faces to learn how to speak and to interact socially in appropriate ways. We are raising a generation of kids that have been blocked from the ability of their brains to assimilate information correctly. We have given the state, you, the ability to make medical decisions for our families. For many, it was done without a second thought. This was all done with data available that children were at extraordinary little risk from this disease. In fact, would anyone like to guess how many children 14 and under have died from COVID in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania since the outset of this disease? The answer is zero. Yet we ask these, this, the sacrifice for a disease that overwhelmingly does not affect them seriously. This is immoral. But even more so, cloth masks and flimsy surgical masks do nothing in the preventing of spread of Omicron. On a national news broadcast two weeks ago, a national reporter said the number-one underreported story last year is the damage we've done to our children. Despite what we are being told by those who would support the masking of our children for however raised upon possible criteria, the news on COVID is encouraging. Omicron, while far more transmissible, is far less serious and almost universally results in recovery. The CDC has recognized the endemic nature of this strain, limiting quarantine times, and the recognition that we need to get on with getting life back, particularly for the safety of our children. Many districts have successfully moved to mask optional, including neighborhood Quikertown School District. Their high school, though larger by 600 students, continues to maintain low COVID counts among the student population. They have come to the conclusion, as you should as well, that of the endemic nature of this virus, and they no longer notify parents of positive cases. Their policy as far should be, if you are sick, stay home. This is the reality of how far we are to a closure. And most of our schools are now at 35% for the threshold numbers. And this should be the peak of the epidemic at this point, one week away, one week out from returning to college. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kylie Baker. I'm a junior here at Southern Lehigh, and I have never had a real year of high school. I lost the second half of my freshman year, never got to perform in our hard-worked musical, lost the chance to compete at tournaments, and watched my upper classes lose proms and graduations. My entire sophomore year was offline, and I never got to meet my teachers or interact with my friends. I'm not going to tell you the same facts and statistics you hear time to time again about the efficiency of masks. Because if they did not sway you before, they will not sway you now. And there are far more experienced and knowledgeable speakers than I will tonight. What I can offer tonight is a perspective of a student that many of the board members this evening have prioritized. What I can tell you is that I am terrified for my community. Our new cases today passed over 1,000, if even our small Lehigh County, which, worse in comparison to Pennsylvania, is 2.2 million. I understand and can totally sympathize with everyone's frustration over how long this pandemic has gone on. But I have to offset the tone that many speakers have given masks as draconian or tedious. I accept these masks as part of my job to my community to keep my valued members safe. There will come a time to end this mask mandate, but now is not the time. Our cases will spike even higher, and it will hurt our children. It's little kids who haven't gone to masks yet, it's teens who can't get their booster yet, it's seniors who want a real graduation, it's juniors who want a prom. Tomorrow, when the mask mandate ends in the high school, I will continue to wear my mask, and many who will come with peers will as well, because I want to protect my community, I protect my family, and I protect my peers. But that's not just my job or the job of my peers, it is your job too. When you were sworn on to the school board, you made a promise to listen to the students and keep us in schools and keep us safe. So keep us safe by making sure we keep our masks on. And we need to keep our students in, our teachers and our staff in the classroom and out of hospitals and out of quarantines. I'm asking you to listen to the doctors and to listen to your constituents. They know best in this case and have seen this all before. Whether you like the mask or not, this isn't some opinion-based discussion. This is about statistics and logic. Stop politicizing my health and my education. I have a little brother to keep well, I have parents to keep safe. I have a father in healthcare that has put children younger and healthier than me on ventilators that they don't get to come home from because of the lack of action taken by the trusted and the elected. The judgment of the student body may not hold the weight of your voting block, but I should hope that we mean something, because I want to perform in my musical, I want to compete in my tournaments, I want to remain in school, I want to get to know my friends and teachers, and I want my first real prom. Let me have-
Thank you for allowing me to move on tonight. face coverings. I have found the proposed changes to be really kind of absurd. Our entire student body in the Southern Lee High School District is under thirty-two hundred students, which makes up approximately zero-point-eight percent of the population of Lehigh County. This proposal, which uses COVID case metrics in Lehigh County, states that masks are mandated under Tier Three when there are seventy-five cases of COVID-19 in Lehigh County in a seven-day period for one hundred thousand residents. Sorry, I see the math's making it not exaggerated. All right, zero-point-eight percent of that would amount to one to two students who'd need to test positive in a seven-day period for masks to be mandated in our school district. This tells me those in charge of the Health and Safety Plan really never want to remove masks from our children. At the last meeting, somebody asked, "Why now?" I asked, "Why not before?" Face masks in school is not a normal from which any deviation is considered deposterous. It should be quite the opposite. That aside, there is an obvious answer to the question. As of December, there are no national mandates, no state mandates, and no health secretary mandates for the use of masks in children's schools. You have now become decision makers, and as such, hold the entire responsibility for any mandated medical intervention. I believe the children are our most precious commodity. They have no collective choice, and as such, require special consideration and protection. I am proud of that. The W H O and U N E S A have published a special recommendation on the use of face coverings on children wearing COVID-19. Due to the delicate nature of masking children, uh, this, this is written. I'm one of our local healthcare speakers. They recognize real and potential harms that they come from placing masks on children. I am worried and talk you into documents that you can understand the responsibility you are now taking on if you enforce a mask mandate. If such a mandate were to be in place, it would be your responsibility to ensure proper training for students, parents, and teachers, promising provision of young students, and access to equal and free quality masks, among other things. They say that if interventions be adopted, and they use the term intervention, quote, "Monitoring and evaluation should be established at the onset, and should include indicators that measure the impact on child's health, including mental health, reduction in transmission of SARS-CoV-2, motivators and barriers to mask-wearing, and secondary impacts on child's development and learning, attendance in school, ability to express him or herself or access school, and impact on children with developmental delays, health conditions, disabilities, or other vulnerabilities. Data should be used to inform strategies on communication, training and support to teachers, educators, and parents. I believe that Health and Safety Plan neglects to address any of this. You can begin collecting this data from parents sitting in front of you here tonight."
Maria Alt? Maria Alt?
Uh, Stephanie Thompson.
I'm sorry, am I out? It's okay, I'm going for two different seats.
Stephanie Thompson?
You're Stephanie Thompson, okay.
So this will be a continuation of that real speech. Many here have spoken in support of mask mandates for children, not recommendations, failing to recognize any actual or potential harm from the continued use of masks for over one and a half years. To say no potential harms are coming from this as a healthcare professional is either misleading or a show of ignorance. The United Kingdom recently updated their guidance for the use of face coverings on schoolchildren last week. Their summary used the evidence of both the benefit and the risk of mask wear. They say this, "Wearing face coverings may have a physical side effect, impair face identification, verbal and non-verbal communication between the teacher and the learner." This means there are downsides to face coverings for pupils and students, including detrimental impacts on the communication in the classroom. At different times during the pandemic, the risk of potential negative impacts on teaching, learning, and the broader health of the community have been needed to be balanced against the benefit of face coverings, making this a balanced judgment. The key word is balanced. Their conclusion led to the recommendation of the use of face coverings in secondary schools, but in line with many of the other European countries, they still do not recommend face masks for children under twelve. People's feelings seem to imply that those who advocate for mask optional for our students are somehow selfish. I believe this is precisely the opposite. The healthcare policies around COVID-19 have been balanced for the protection of the adults after the sacrifice of our children. I cannot imagine a place where it's moral to expect the sacrifice of our children over the adults' good. There are many school districts, entire states, and even nations that do not recommend face masks in our school, especially for children under twelve. Some have never recommended it throughout the pandemic at all. Because our children have been under a mask mandate in schools for over one and a half years, I'd recommend that a risk-slash-benefit and balanced approach that would conclude the following. The data regarding face coverings on children in schools is still conflicting. Still, the vast shows that many may be in modest reduction in cases if universal mask use is applied with all of our mitigation measures in place. Given the potential harm to students using masks in the educational setting and the unknown and never researched harms, this may be caused by extending the continuous use of masks on our students here in Southern Lehigh. The recommendation will be to continue face coverings as recommended by local health experts until this, the advisors see fit to change it, with the option to remove face coverings for our children will feel they are negatively affected by their use. There shall be no stigma or punishment attached to those children exercising either choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcy Johnson? Bye. Good evening. My name is Marcy Johnson, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker and a parent to Southern Lee High students. For the past several days, I have been struggling with what to say at this meeting that board members will hear and consider when voting on changes to our Health and Safety Plan. I barely slept last night thinking about this, because it is so critically important that we stay the course with the layered mitigation that has successfully kept our children in school without major disruptions. Even with mitigation measures, we are having disruptions due to our high level of community transmission. Imagine taking away one of the most critical mitigation tools we have right now. Without universal masking during the surge, the other layers become less effective, contact tracing becomes nearly impossible. No one knows who should quarantine, and COVID rapidly spreads throughout our buildings with nothing to keep it in check. We'll lose in-person instruction due to our teachers and staff being sick, a well-known substitute shortage, and bus drivers being sick. Our schools will be forced into virtual learning due to uncontrolled spread. No one wants this. The reality is COVID isn't going anywhere, and we need to learn to live with it. I've heard this said at previous board meetings, and I agree. The way we live with it is that when there's uncontrolled spread, as there is right now, we use all the mitigation tools we have at our disposal. The way we live with it is to say, yes, we'd like to make masking optional, and we will, but now is not the right time for that. When the time is right, we will adjust. If there is another surge, we mask it back up. That is how we live with this virus for now. Not forever, but for now. We need to respond to what is happening in real time with mitigation measures that work. We need to give our heroic, overworked, and exhausted healthcare workers on the frontlines of this pandemic a break. They are our friends, our neighbors, our family members, and our most trusted caretakers when we get sick. They are telling us repeatedly that our local hospitals are being pushed to the limit during the surge and to keep masking our kids, their own kids at school. Can we really ignore the reality of this situation when they are giving us firsthand accounts of this dire situation at board meetings week after week? They are telling us that we're at a crisis point, and we need to stay the course. We need to listen. When the surge subsides and the metrics in the proposed tiered system dictate, let's go mask optional. If the tiered system is not something you support, then what is the alternative? What metrics will we use instead? We cannot just set a random date because we are tired of our children wearing masks at school and remove this critical tool. Please, please, please follow the guidance, and for each of you to put your personal feelings about masks aside, and allow the reality of the situation to dictate our responses in a systematic way. We need a decision-making tool that will dictate when we mask universally and when it becomes mask optional. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a seven-minute break.
As taxpayers concerned Southern Lee High parents and community members, we would like to take this opportunity to collectively express our concerns regarding what transpired at the December twenty-first board meeting, and call attention to the unnecessary and unprofessional conduct that had occurred. This special meeting was called to specifically discuss parent masking policy. There are several issues we would like to address at this time. Southern Lee High must move forward with a mask optional policy. Regardless of any medical recommendations to continue mask-wearing for our children, the Southern Lee High Board has a legal obligation to amend its mandate now. Pennsylvania school boards that continue to enforce mask mandates are subject to potential lawsuits based on the following. P A School Code 510 does not apply for mask mandates. When the Southern Lee High solicitor spoke at the December twenty-first board meeting, he incorrectly stated that the board does have the right to mandate mask-wearing, and cited authority to do so was P A Section 510. However, according to Attorney Shinney and according to Attorney Eric Winters, the two attorneys who successfully argued and won the P A Commonwealth Court case, the P A School Code Section 510 does not provide school boards with the authority to mandate masks in their schools. To do so would subject them to potential lawsuits, and this code will not hold up in court. Why? Because Section 510 rules and regulations, safety controls, addresses management of school affairs, and conducts a decorment of employees and students only, not health protocols. Code 510 does not mention mask or face coverage, disease control, health, safety, viruses, or infectious diseases. The Pennsylvania Supreme Court recently released their opinion on their six-to-zero ruling to uphold Commonwealth Court's decision on statewide school mask mandate. Mask-wearing, freedom of choice, there are, these are our children and our rights as parents to decide individually as a family what is best for them. Mask optional is a reasonable and common sense solution based on science and the fact that despite masking all this time and the availability of the COVID vaccine for those who are eligible and wanted, people are still getting sick whether vaccinated or not, masked or not, not to mention testing lately has been a nightmare and not always accurate. Those who feel more comfortable masking have the right to do so. Just as those who don't want to or can't wear a mask for personal medical reasons should have the right not to wear a mask. What is disheartening is that many children who have experienced school for the first time when COVID all started have been unfortunately conditioned to think that wearing a mask is normal. How is it acceptable for certain people to say that those who aren't COVID-vaccinated or are pro-mask optional are unpatriotic or selfish, uncaring? How is that not divisive? Everybody's situation is different. It should be a personal choice. It appears we are living in times where fear may supersede common sense and critical thinking is discouraged.
I'm going to continue on with my friend. And lack of data, disinformation, and misinformation promotes fear. Claims that hospitals are at capacity, as mentioned by some of the doctors at the, at the meeting, can only fuel more hysteria against the vaccinated against the unvaccinated. Even though masking, vaccinations, and even boosters have not been effective in stopping the spread, if hospitals are at full, surely, if not due to COVID alone, it is also COVID influenced season. Why are we not taking into consideration that there are numerous reasons why a hospital may be pulled? Staffing shortages due to illness or medical professionals who have left or fired for not complying with vaccine mandates does not have an impact on availability of hospital beds. Our local hospitals service not just patients within Lehigh Valley, but also outside counties and possibly other states as well. When health professionals such as those who recently spoke at board meetings are called upon in support of a pro-mask agenda, it really is a disservice. There are also health professionals on the other end who may support the freedom of choice when it comes to masking, but unfortunately, they may be silenced by fear of losing their job or even having their credibility compromised. As an example, Dr. Chris Lamb's comments about effectiveness of masks were misconstrued from the last meeting. He noted that masks had minimal effectiveness, five to one percent, and the study conducted was on adults. Children certainly are not wearing masks properly. For as many doctors who are pro-mask, there are doctors who are pro-mask optional. It is your, it is irresponsible to think that our children aren't negatively affected by COVID protocols and mask mandates over the last two years. We need to stop the madness now and move towards normalcy for the state's sake of our children who have already suffered enough, miss special events, increase in anxiety and depression, negative impact on learning and academic progress, et cetera. Recent data, Southern Lee High fourteen-day rolling out case counts as of January fifth are as follows. COVID, under four, Libertyville, under two, Elementary, under four, Southern Lee High High School, under three, Southern Lee High High School, twelve. The trigger point for case in high school is forty-five. The fact that we are not given a third or fourth that number in the high school while on Christmas break is an excellent sign. The numbers are even lower for the elementary, intermediate, and middle school, not even approaching twenty percent of those trigger points to shut down. Findings of the Canadian research study mirrors findings from the U S Centers of Disease Control. The rate of hospitalizations Americans with COVID-19 has dropped fifty percent in the video-on-prem variant compared to the record highs seen a year ago, new CDC data shows. Although more infection severity is lower, as risk of ICU admissions or death from Omicron is eighty-three percent lower than Delta.
Okay. Your turn, Lisa. Thank you. Thank you. Jillian Day?
The fact that a torch has passed me after the two-year-old Korean statement neglect of establishing Health and Safety Plan to include proper education and to implement policies and procedures for mask-wearing by minor children. Thus far, the Health and Safety Plan has neglected to address this. Therefore, the previous school board has been negligent in ensuring health and safety of the children who have been mandated to use masking as an intervention. Even if this P A Supreme Court cited the Commonwealth Court's ruling that the acting secretary who helps mask mandate is not valid nor legitimate. It is negligent for mandates to be imposed without properly assessing the impact. The WHO/UNICEF published a guide entitled "Advice on the Use of Masks for Children in the Community in Context with COVID-19." When discussing the effects of masking on children, the guiding principle should be, first, do no harm. There are numerous articles citing harm to children from masking, ranging from psychological effects, increases in cases of anxiety and depression, to physical, such as development of eye sty, eye skies from prolonged mask-wearing. And yet, our district neglected to ensure the health and safety of the children who have been mandated to use masking as an intervention. There are no established guidelines. To fully understand the responsibility of such decisions to mandate a medical intervention, the school board should review the following implementation considerations as recommended by the WHO/UNICEF guide. And I quote, "If authorities decide to recommend mask-wearing for children, key information should be collected on a regular basis to accompany and monitor the intervention. Monitoring and evaluation should be established at the onset, and should include indicators that measure the impact on the child's health, including mental health, reduction in transmission of SARS-CoV-2, motivators and barriers to mask-wearing, and secondary impacts on child's development, developmental learning, attendance in school, ability, ability to express himself and self-identity."
And may I remind everyone for everything that we continue to do today, 24/7. In our great country, we the healthcare workers continue to treat the people that refuse to mask, that refuse to get vaccinated, and when they get sick, are the very first ones to run seeking, begging for help from the same group of science professionals that they so adamantly oppose. Trusting only then the science they question. It is completely different when COVID infection hits close to home and a loved one gets extremely ill. I think tonight, the chance is very clear. We continue with a reasonable masking requirement that has allowed us to maintain our school open and in-person learning for about six months now? Or we botch the whole thing and play experiment with our kids and our teachers in the middle of a pandemic with the most contagious variant that we have seen? And we observe and let the infection emerge, right? So we hit the threshold and probably the person who have the closest out. We've heard like, "I don't think that's gonna happen. There's no precedent." Well, we're living unprecedented times and it might happen. We might run out of teachers to teach. We just came back from the holiday break. If we would have removed the masks before, it would have been a disaster. Tonight, I urge you both your conscience because we're gonna come back and we're gonna hold your calm and we're gonna tell you who told us.
Thank you. Stephen Pearson. Stephen Pearson. Nicole Doolan.
Hello. The Department of Health did shut down the Malibu High School in September. So going virtual has not only been elected by district. Our own district has already had to work with the DOH. The Red Bell was having a small outbreak, but because it was contained and because correct actions were taken, we didn't have to go to a virtual model. Would the DOH have allowed the Red Bell to remain in person if masking was optional? I think we can all agree that going virtual would be less desirable than being in person, even with masks. Let's do everything we can to ensure we don't reach that point. We aren't there yet, and that's commendable. Let's stay that way. Now is not the time to take our masks off, certainly not if it means we won't be able to get subs. This gain was information that we don't have, that if we don't have universal masking, we may not get the subs needed to stay open, which is very concerning. And I hope that is being taken under serious consideration by every board member. For what it's worth, I think a tier plan was a good compromise for this community that is basically split 50/50 when it comes to masking. It holds those who think we should continue masking at this time to agree upon terms for shifting to masks optional, while giving them the assurance that if things get worse, then universal masking will be reinstated. It assures those who think masks should be optional, it assures those who think masks should be optional actual defined terms for when they'll get that, while still going them to an agreement that we may need to return to universal masking. Also, there are plenty of teachers, staff, and students who have children back home who are not eligible for the vaccine. COVID-19 is being passed through vaccinated people, so it is reasonable for them to be concerned about bringing it home to their vulnerable unvaccinated children. It is reasonable for them to be more concerned in a mask optional environment. But if you do choose to revert to mask optional at this time, please at least have a health and safety plan that has terms set for what would constitute having a universal masking policy put back into place. So that if we do have an outright free situation, our administration can pivot quickly to take steps that would avoid being forced into a virtual model. Additionally, please consider setting the beginning of a mask optional period to January 21st. That way, a family who wants to sign up for the Smart Academy Cyber Option can do so without scrambling to figure out what to do for their child's education during the six school days between tonight and the start of the next enrollment term. Please make decisions so that if one of our schools is forced into a virtual model, you can say you did everything you could to avoid it. Thank you.
Tim Curry.
It's Tim Curry. This is my expert bucket. These are the things you have to ignore to put your opinion to save its time to take masks off. Records, study of long-term COVID, other ways to prevent long-term COVID masking. Why now is not the time to take off masks? This is from the Department of Pediatrics at Lehigh Valley Network. Masked work, science and common sense backed that. Just wear a mask. This is my vice medical newspaper. This is the front page, combatant COVID. Medical and public health science supports mask and is strongly established. Last Thursday, Lehigh County topped five in Pennsylvania for COVID infection. Local hospitalizations up 65% in a month. Last Wednesday, hospitalizations topped the local record for COVID. Philly has 88 schools going remote. CHOP said districts considering drop of mask requirements should wait till there's case reductions. The administrator last month, superintendent, said it's perilous, on the bitter edge, in crisis, keep all mitigation. 80% of our teachers said they are against going mask optional now. St. Luke's supports mask mandates for our schools because they help slow the spread. Dr. Jerry, chief of infectious diseases, if there ever was a time for area school boards to get behind masking, it's now. Dr. Janko, chair of Pediatrics at St. Luke's, I am pleading with every school to protect our children, and that includes universal masking in schools. The CNN clip to go mask optional last month, the headline was actually, "Why You Need to Upgrade Your Mask." Dr. Wen said, "If all you have is a cloth mask, it's still better than none." For powers to do this, the solicitor says you have authority to do this. Not a single court has said a district can't. The lawyer who overturned the state mandate, one of the lawyers, said the decision now goes to school boards. The decision itself said that school boards have broad authority. Ten physicians, ten people with medical background spoke against going mask optional last month. I've heard Europe doesn't mask. This week, England is masking for secondary school kids. Why? Evidence suggests masks are effective in reducing transmission. This is everything that you have to ignore if you're gonna say your opinion outweighs that. I'm saying that as a concerned parent, but not a medical expert about what is best for my daughter and the students around her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ali Humon.
Hello, my name is Ali Humon, and I'm a senior here at the high school. I'm speaking before you tonight to ask you to keep the mask mandate in place. As you have heard from the doctors who have spoken before me, masks are scientifically proven to slow the spread of COVID. As someone who lives with their grandparents, my family and I cannot risk getting COVID at home. Several friends of mine also have immunocompromised people at home who they want to be safe. For others who think that their own beliefs, beliefs that contradict proven science, take precedence over my family's safety and the safety of the community is lackable. A lot of parents who spoke at the last meeting were worried about the mental health of students wearing masks. As a student, I can safely say that all kids, especially seniors, care about staying in school. If we take away masks, we will be at home due to the number of cases and kids that are sick. That kind of isolation is where the mental health issues start, not wearing a piece of cloth over their nose and mouth. I can say this confidently as a student who dealt with depression during online learning. To all of the school board members who were recently elected, when you were asked the question of why are you seeking elections as a school board and what do you hope to accomplish if elected to do it, these were your responses. Mr. Mont, I am running for school board to ensure our students are the key driving factor in decision-making. Mrs. King, I am first and foremost running for all of the students at Southern High. My plan is to always have an open and honest running dialogue with the people of the district. Mr. Wayar, open communication and dialogue with the community, parents, and students is necessary to ensure that needs of our community are fulfilled. Ms. Reiner, you're committed to getting children back into classrooms safely. I'll give you an emphasis on wanting to keep students safe and having an open dialogue with students of the district. This is me, a student who wants to be kept safe, being open and honest with you and the community. If you vote to lift this mask mandate against the community pleading, and your argument is being of choice, I say to you, if you really want to give us students the choice of how we learn, give us another option. Give us the choice to go to online school. If you don't feel safe coming to school in person, you don't have to make it mandatory. But when students feel unsafe in school, they feel less focused on their education and more whether or not they're getting sick from their peers. We have been through hell and back as a student body, and I'd like to think that we've come out of this as stronger people. We've had to deal with online learning before, and we now have the tools and skills to learn online if we choose to do so. Please consider this as an option to accommodate the students who may not feel comfortable learning in person without the mask mandate. I'm asking you to listen to us as students because it affects us. We are the ones in school. We are the ones with the stories. Parents may be able to empathize, but we are students who are about to go out into the world with the unique experience of living and learning throughout a global pandemic. This is unprecedented in our modern world. Listen to what we are saying. Thank you.
Yeah, hurry up, Tony.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Prince, and I am a senior currently in my last year of my high school experience. As a child who is subject to these masking policies, I would like to express my frustration. I spent my junior year and a portion of my sophomore year as a remote student, just like many of my peers before me today. I did this to help secure my safety as well as the safety of my family. I understand that the mask may seem like a tasking norm into our lives, but when it comes to the protection of children and their families, it is something I will continue to proudly wear. Sadly, it seems as though masks are no longer a discussion of facts and statistics, but personal opinion where we can leak in our own political leaks, and so I bring something to that effect. Listen to us. Listen to the children who have to face this pandemic head-on. If the mask mandate were no longer to be in place, I ask all of you to consider an alternative route for children who no longer feel comfortable attending school. Through virtual learning, we can accomplish such a route. When a child is in quarantine for COVID or COVID-like symptoms, virtual is their platform for learning. Expecting that to children who wish to stay at home and not risk potentially infecting their family or themselves could be extremely beneficial. I have a five-month-year-old nephew at home, and the chances of him catching RSV from the virus is extremely high. Immediately when I have to go home, I have to go through an extensive determination process, which also is the same for his own mother, who is an EMT and constantly sees families ripped apart by this pandemic. If I were to bring this virus to my home and infect my nephew, I could never forgive myself and even if any of my family members, and that is why we won't take the risk if the mask mandate is no longer enforced. We all are aware of the effectiveness of masks. Without it, cases will spike. Look at the high levels of cases we have right now. And now here is living new variants and higher chances of transmission. I don't want to go virtual my senior year. I don't want to be uncomfortable in my school, but you are not giving me a choice. I am asking you, as one of the children, do you all ran to support and protect, to keep masks? Or give me an option to protect myself? Thank you.
Pediatric cases of COVID-19 are broadening, and now is not the time to say goodbye to masks. This is a news release by Dr. Deborah Carter from December 23rd. Dr. Carter is the executive vice chair of Department of Pediatrics for Lehigh Valley Hospital. She states, "The surge is not going away like we predicted or hoped. In fact, we're seeing cases in children go up." Last week at Lehigh Valley Health Network, we saw the highest number of six- to 12-year-olds test positive for COVID-19 ever, more than 350. We also saw more children hospitalized for COVID-19 than ever before. In a news release issued New Year's Eve, St. Luke's University Health Network officials said that they support mandatory masking at area schools as children return to classrooms after the holiday because masking's ability to help slow the spread of the virus. Quote, "What we are experiencing now is our biggest COVID surge yet," said Jeffrey Jerry, St. Luke's senior vice president and medical academic of affairs and section chief of infectious disease. "If there was ever a time for area school boards, administrators, and parents to get behind masking, it's now." In the same news release, Dr. Jennifer Jango, St. Luke's chair of Pediatrics states, "This current surge of Omicron is infecting children in much higher numbers. And in pleading with every parent and school, please partner with us to protect our children, we need to do everything we can, and that includes universal masking in schools." It's perplexing to me why a school board would vote to change a universal masking policy while health networks, the chair of Pediatrics of both networks, in achieving infectious disease and of both networks support masking at this point. I ask, why would you ignore the local expert recommendations? For the most part, I do believe that masking is political theater, Mrs. King said. I just think of it as a lot of politics. I'm curious where you're getting your guidance for masking. Do you think the healthcare networks will local pediatrician, infectious disease physician, every mental society in our country, 99% healthcare workers are leading part of liberal bedwaters? Dr. Jeff Jerry, who appeared on Fox and Friends with Sean Hannity, is this political theater to him? Is he a liberal bedwater? A doctor appeared? Do you have that little concern for healthcare workers in our community who have dedicated their life to caring for the people in our community and are asking for your help? It seems to me that emergency board meeting on December 23rd was more political theater. It had nothing to do with what healthcare networks are advising, that the well-being of our students and keeping kids in class. In conclusion, in a recent talking source article, Mr. Wayar also cited cancel culture and the Lehigh Valley, which he said is widely believed his employer has received multiple complaints about him. He said that anonymous complaints were part of an effort by political opponents to cancel my opinion, to threaten my position for my family and for our community and those who voted for me and all the members of this school board. Mr. Wayar, I ask you, is that what you were trying to do to me when you contacted my employer?
Your point is up here.
And the answer is yes, I took the oath to do that.
Ken Dranko.
My name is Dr. Kenny Dranko, former board certified pediatrician, internal medicine doctor, and current anesthesiologist. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And I also want to thank the board members for their dedication and the work they do in our community. Thank you. I want to first present what I'm about to say by acknowledging Dr. Wayar, the work he does in our community. He is an important physician in the St. Luke's Health Network. He takes care of high-risk pregnancy pregnant women. He's right at what he does. I should know personally. I read his consults on these high-risk pregnant women. He's a periodontologist, but he's not a pediatrician. He has no pediatric training. I, as well as all pediatricians, would disagree with you when you said at the last board meeting, and I'll paraphrase, "COVID is not a disease of the pediatric population." I would simply assume that's your personal opinion and not your professional, since you are not a pediatrician. But Dr. Liz Gibson, our district manager director, Dr. Jennifer Jako, the chairman at St. Luke's for Pediatrics, they are pediatricians, and they do think COVID is a disease of the pediatric population, specifically those who are unvaccinated or immunocompromised. Yes, I'll point out that the latest variant has been milder in terms of symptoms, thank goodness. However, Dr. Scott Hadley, chief of adolescent and young adult medicine at Massachusetts General Hospital, has been recently quoted as saying, "There has been a lot of attention paid, a lot of attention paid to the idea that kids don't get as sick as other age groups, but they can still get very sick and have enormous complications. They're at risk of long COVID and, of course, multi-system inflammatory syndrome, even with mild cases." You must look for pediatric and infectious disease experts for guidance. Opinions always matter, but expert opinions and science dictate and should drive public health policy, not opinions. Quote, Dr. Jeff Jerry, for the third time, who is, of course, head of infectious disease at St. Luke's, "If there was ever a time to get behind masking, it's now." To quote Dr. Jennifer Leiter, who's a pediatric infectious disease expert and epidemiologist at NYU, "COVID is now a disease of the unvaccinated and the immunocompromised. It's our duty to protect them." I leave it up to you, Southern High School Board. Will you please protect our students and our teachers? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Connie Dranko. I'm a, how to say, I'm an EDO, an osteopathic physician with a philosophy of a holistic approach to the person, mind, body, and spirit. I'm asking the school board, create a directive, criteria to determine the appropriate masking policy for our school. My concern is that the elevated case rates in the community will translate into elevated case rates amongst our teachers. So whether they get it from the community or they get it from an unmasked student during school, I want to make sure that the teachers are in school teaching our children. Without our teachers, our children's education will get disrupted. Some recent numbers I just want to go over. Our Lehigh County rate, case rate has quadrupled since our last school board meeting, December 21st. Second thing, the American Academy of Pediatrics reported that 580,000 new pediatric cases were reported within this past week. So this number is double the highest number of cases per week that we've ever seen in the pandemic. And that high peak came the first week of September. Again, people are saying, "What's the big deal? Kids aren't getting that sick." Well, the big deal is that if you test positive, you're out for five days, right? And not every teacher has had a link to class. Those students aren't missing instruction. So it doesn't matter whether they're hospitalized or not. They're still out of school for five days. I'd like to say the first six days of school, according to the reports that were sent out, 232 students were absent due to COVID. And this is in contrast to the 50 students that were out during the first three months of school. Dr. Wayar, this was addressed in another presentation, that study that you brought up, that you presented, that I thought was a study that you presented. I just want to set that clear, and I'm gonna quote directly from the paper. This has been referenced in surgical masks, and there's another number for cloth masks. But the study says that the relative reduction in symptomatic zero prevalence was 11% overall. So this does not mean that surgical masks were 11% effective. It means that the community who was wearing surgical masks had 11% decrease in COVID cases, right, for people who had symptoms and tested positive. Surgical masks reduced case by 11%, right? If we had an 11% reduction in cases for the kids who were out the first six days, that's 25 kids that would have been in school. That's 125 school days that they would have had. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And the study, just the caveat from the study was they looked at different communities and people who were masked. That community was only 42% masked, right? So the authors concluded that if there was actually universal masking, the difference in decreased case rates would be higher. So I am not pushing a pro-mask agenda. I don't blame wearing masks. I'd rather not wear them. I'm pushing a pro-children agenda, very concerned for the physical and mental health. And it's because of being casted from school or the school's closing down. That's where we're getting the behavioral problems and the suicide rates and all of the troubles that were happening. I'm also a pro-teacher agenda. And a pro-healthcare agenda. Please don't pour in a thousand more.
I can't do the first name, but I believe it's Desai. Daris Desai.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Ici. I'm a cancer surgeon. I live in this community. I have a Southernly high graduate, and I have two sons in high school. First, I want to thank the previous board for following the science, even as the science guidelines are changing. I appreciate that our schools remain open and safe, not just for our students, but for our staff as well. I want to thank the current board for choosing to serve our community. I know it's not an easy job. I am not in support of going to mask optional at this time. I believe that wearing masks has become criticized on both ends of the spectrum. I prefer to base health decisions on science and reliable metrics, as I have done my entire career. As a surgeon, I am someone who has worn a mask regularly for the majority of my life to protect my patients. We can argue the efficacy of masks. We already know that they're not perfect, but the combination of other mitigation efforts, they work. At the last board meeting, I'm with a study was mentioned, just heard about it, getting shown an 11% approval with masking. It's actually an 11% risk reduction, and now it's with 50% of the people not even wearing the mask correctly. That risk reduction, the FDA approves potentially lethal medications for far less benefits. Masks work. There's also been so much talk about case counts, death rates, and hospitalizations. If you remember when the pandemic started, the phrase flattened the herd, happened to do hospitalizations. We need to ensure that our hospitals are able to treat and care for not just patients with COVID, but also patients who need and care for serious illnesses and emergencies. So we need to take necessary precautions to ensure that. Well, that's where we are today. At that time, early in the pandemic, without privilege of the knowledge we have now, much of the world shut down. Now we know better, so we do better. We know that through vaccination, vaccines, masks, hand washing, distancing, we may all allow the world to remain open. However, we've currently seen a surge in hospital admissions unprecedented with any other time in the pandemic. St. Luke's broke the record of patient admissions last week for COVID. We need to flatten this curve. As surgeons, we're constantly reevaluating our schedules every day to ensure that we have space for our patients in the hospital. Putting a hole in cancer surgery is not ideal. So why should this matter to you, the school board? Because our kids don't go to school in a vacuum. They're part of a larger community. They're taught by educators, that are parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, children, people with families and friends that also need to be considered into this equation. We need our educators to be healthy in order to continue to teach our students. There's a difference between having students in buildings and having students in buildings actually learning. What is the point of having an open building with no staff? I do not want my kids running with open. I do not want our teachers to have to teach with a computer. I want our kids in school being taught by the teachers of Southernly High. The way to ensure this is by keeping all current mitigation efforts in place during a time where we are seeing the largest spikes in COVID cases we've ever seen. I concur with my colleagues in St. Luke's, Dr. Jeff Jerry, Dr. Jennifer Jango, for infectious disease and pediatrics, supporting masks not being optional at this time. So please do not make masks optional. I do not put in that masking should go on perpetually, but I do believe that universal masking, hand washing, and distancing in our schools is what is needed right now to keep schools open. As has always been the case during the pandemic, as new information and local data have been available to adapt policies and procedures, to allow universal masking to aspire tonight without a discussion and vote is cowardly. This is not an issue which side wins the mask mandate. This is an issue following science and local hospital data to make informed decisions and be working in the same way.
Mark Goldman.
Good evening. My name is Mark Goldman. I have father, two children, Southernly High School district. I was a child whose two daughters received the COVID vaccine and also a residency physician. You, as a board, have heard from countless experts on the importance of masking, especially now where Omicron is nearing its peak spread. I hope the importance of masking, both as a parent and as a physician, especially now that cases are surging. Look, I personally hate masking. I hate having my, I hate my children having to wear masks as part of their daily wardrobe. I agree, it's uncomfortable, but I recognize the science showing mask importance. A science that some members of the board seem to minimize or completely disregard. Including a physician who is taking the democratic oath to do no harm, yet ironically, he feels the need to clarify his viewpoints hypocritically to not allow his colleagues, the regions' health networks, his employer, nor his governing board organization, the American Academy of Obstetrics and Gynecology. Since it seems that I will not be able to convince the board members with more realistic statistics about the increase in pediatric... statistics about the increase in pediatric cases of COVID and the overwhelming hospital systems, I want to tell you about the nearby school district's realization about this very topic. The Southern School of Hopkins, nearby private school, had similar debate and realization that if a child or staff member becomes seriously ill with COVID or dies, and mass optional policies in place too prematurely, the school and individual school board members are at risk for being sued for the damages that disparted the public health organizations. I said at the beginning of my comments, I hate masking, and I stand by my words. Instead of arbitrary updates of mask optional, to make masks optional, look at the data around you and decide if it's appropriate to make masks optional. Not now. Dr. Sarah Leavitt introduced a framework that will well-cord our tier system and the exactest for our community's needs. Nearby heartland East Penn adopted tier systems that work. As some members of the board recognize this evening, our children are not the only ones affected by the decision made tonight. The decision will affect the safety of our kids, teachers, and staff as well. I ask for this time to go ahead and do not make masking optional. Even tonight, even tonight, we recognized during the workshop that there's a shortage of substitute teachers in our substitute pool, and some substitutes may not be available if masks become optional as soon as tomorrow. The new board members were elected on the platform, we keep learning in person. Now here's the opportunity to do just that. Keep masking in place through this surge and adopt a tier masking system based upon global epidemiology and expert recommendations. Maybe then we can move forward as a board and use these meetings to address our children's education and districts' needs rather than more debates about COVID policies over and over again. Thank you for your time.
Well, here we are again, discussing a topic which has been discussed countless times by countless people at this point. Not one person in this room tonight is neutral with their stance on masks. And not one person in this room tonight is willing to have their minds changed on the topic. There are people in this room right now that only want what is best for themselves and refuse to believe that there are other people in the room, community, and country. There was a point in 2020 when I realized that presenting data, studies, laws, professional opinions, it all meant nothing so long as it went against the grain. If someone asked why someone wasn't wearing a mask, they could give, they could give the same reaction if they were told, because I don't like the way things in my butt look, as if they were said told, they aren't, there aren't any randomized control human studies that support the efficacy of wearing one. This is still true today. We have known for a very long time that outdoor transmission is not really a thing, yet my house overlooks the soccer field trail, and for the last two years almost, I've watched people walk in a riding bike by themselves with a mask on, despite evidence says otherwise. I'm not here to present data, because, why? People watching from home have more than likely added their minds, and so have the people in this room. I'm not perfect in disrespect either, as my mind has been made up based on my personal health, my experiences, and existing data that I've read and listened to. I'm willing to change my positions based on new data, but on this topic, not much has changed since March of 2020. For those who may not have been paying attention, our nation has been going through a reflective briefing, with that comes the five stages. Denial, anger, bargaining, depression, and acceptance. Everyone knows someone that's in one of these specific stages right now. There's a group of people that made it to the acceptance stage pretty quick, and those people are the ones that have chose to live without fear. Those people accepted that we would all have COVID at some point, regardless of the variant, and made a risk assessment that best fit their lives. Many people are still stuck in the bargaining stage, willing to do anything so long as they will be spared by the virus. They will stay home, they'll wear a mask, wear two masks, receive three vaccinations, mask their four year, whatever it takes. They have yet to realize that no matter what they do, they will still, one day, have COVID. And all they bargain away is their ability to think for themselves, their bodily autonomy, their physical and mental health, and all of that which belongs to their children. Why am I here, other than to ramble on and be honest with you? I'm here to show my daughters and no one else that if you reach a decision on any topic through critical thinking and logic, then you should stand firm when pushed. They are not taxpayers of voters, but they do have a say. Everyone in this room and watching were in their shoes at one point. And I ask that we all take a moment to remember what it was like, and agree to let our kids be kids again.
My name is Paul Devel, and I'm the father of two children in this district. I've been coming to this board meeting and these board meetings since last August, asking for the removal of all mask mandates to allow consistency in our schools, allow our students, parents, and staff to not have to worry about changing requirements every few weeks. Yet here we are. We continue to hear from medical professionals who speak of masking like it's a magic barrier to keep you from getting COVID, yet discounting or ignoring the side effects of this medical remediation. Every medical treatment has side effects. Per the NIH, common side effects of masking include headaches and dermatitis. In addition, in the learning environment, face masks impair facial recognition and nonverbal cues. Face masks block emotional signaling between teachers and students, and amongst students, which leads to greater social anxiety and emotional distress. These anxieties can metastasize into cognitive disabilities and lead to depression, attention deficit disorders, and worse. As for the benefits of masking, sure, a well-stating N95 mask has been shown to be highly effective in preventing the transmission of COVID on the team. But that's not what is being warranted or is in previously required by the public health and safety plan. Recent publication from the ACGIH, taken CDC data, shows if you and the infected person are not wearing a mask, you're going to transmit COVID in about 15 minutes. Well, let's look at cloth masks. If our students right now are wearing cloth masks and sitting next to somebody with COVID, they're going to transmit that in 27 minutes. A slight improvement, sure. The only way you're going to get effective transmission, if reduce or eliminate transmission, is if you move to N95 masks. And the interesting thing about this chart here, it shows that even if the infected person is wearing nothing, if the other infected person is wearing an N95 mask, the transmission rate is two and a half hours. In other words, 10, it's 10 times the rate of, I'm sorry, 6 times the rate of if only, if both are wearing cloth masks. So what are we talking about here? Masking, the cloth masks that we have right now are unaffected. The overall transmission, our class periods are longer than 27 minutes. So if you're sitting next to somebody in a classroom for a period of time, whether you're wearing a cloth mask or no mask, the likelihood is the same people transmitting COVID. Now, the benefit of going to an optional masking policy is if you do still have concerns, if you do still have fear, you can wear an N95 mask and have six times more protection, even if the person next to you is other masks. With this information, I ask to please remove any requirements for masking from our health and safety plan. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Wiggly. I'm a parent of two children in the district, and my first grader attends St. Mike's. First, I want to thank the presenters tonight. What you presented was highly encouraging, and I really look forward to hearing more of those topics and discussions in future board meetings. Over the past two years, our community has spent tremendous amount of time on masking topic. We need to put these issues behind us. We need to safely move forward with the business, the common goal of quality education for our youth, and very importantly, to regain our community's spirit of pride, enthusiasm, and mutual respect. We recognize that highly transmissible but low-impact Omicron cases are surging. These are predicted to peak later this month. We know the mask minimal effectiveness has not and will not stop this mild Omicron variant. I do sympathize with our medical professionals who've endured and continue to endure unbelievable challenges with COVID. I have close friends on front lines, and I know we have families in the district who have been impacted. I feel very fortunate to live in Southern High, where we have wonderful, excellent teachers. We need to support them, and we need to retain them. I expect that most, if not all, are tired and stressed due to the administrative demands on top of uncertain expectations during these challenging times. We need to let teachers do what they do best, which is to teach. My observation is that the greater community doesn't know the dire substitute shortage situation and the impact it has on in-person learning. An important element of teacher support would be to bolster our substitute teacher rates. I'm highly encouraged by Mr. Pigeon's short-term and long-term strategy presented at the workshop tonight, especially the community outreach. I hope this stays a practical focus area moving forward for the board. It's time to move on and focus our efforts where we can truly make a difference. The way to do this is to maintain the current health and safety plan. Our families were given plenty of time, plenty of notice and the ability to plan accordingly. Another discussion or debate on masking will not be productive. We have asked our minors to sacrifice too much. The children's jobs are to go to school so that they can learn to solve problems, analytically think, make informed decisions, be socially balanced, and be positive contributors to society. In the coming decades, it will be their turn to save lives. They will be the doctors, the nurses, the engineers, the scientists. They will be our protectors, our military, our law enforcement, and all, all of the valuing and contributing roles in this week. It's our duty to give every single student, student Southern High students, the opportunity to be the best that they can. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hello, my name is Emma Yord, actually NLR. But I'll be reading a statement from a parent educator in community number Kristen Bruck, who is unable to be here this evening, and I'm asking to read this on her behalf. So Mrs. Bruck says, "I've been an educator for over 20 years. As a certified reading specialist, I have worked with kids from first grade up to seniors in high school, and even taught pre-service educators at the college level. And one thing I can tell you for sure, although many people think they know what teachers do because they were once in school, unless you've actually been in a classroom teaching, you have no idea what it's like to be an educator, especially an educator right now. Teachers worked so hard last year to support our students, and we told ourselves, we just have to get to the next year, then things will be better. But you know what? They didn't get better. As most teachers, this is the hardest year of teaching we have ever faced, and the decisions you make as a board are going to directly impact what happens in our schools for years to come. A recent survey indicated that half of all teachers have considered quitting in the past 30 days, a sentiment I've heard from teachers in this district. And why is that? Well, last year, the school planned for shorter days to start the year because they knew having kids on screens all day was bad, I mean. The parents complained because they thought that minutes equate in learning. We all quickly saw that having kids on screens all day didn't work. Then we went to hybrid, and we saw that, as educators predicted, this didn't work either. I am so grateful that this year we can be all in person. Masks, vaccines, and quarantines have allowed this to happen. And in the fall, when community transmission levels were low, things were fairly normal. But this past week, teachers have been covering for their colleagues because there aren't enough subs, they're trying to help kids stay at home, at homes, stay caught up on their assignments, they're sick themselves, or home with kids who have COVID positive, test results are close contacts. This is not sustainable. Kids are stressed, and it's not from wearing a mask. They have no idea what to expect from day to day, and they want to stay in school, as we heard from our school students tonight. So I ask the board and everyone here in person and at home listening to, please, remember that you are part of the community. Listen to the experts, doctors, and educators, and the students. Do what you can as low as spread of this virus and support your kids' teachers and administrators. Get vaccinated, boosted, wear a mask, quarantine is needed, and ask the teachers how you can help. That's the only way we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. I'd like to thank all the visitors for taking the time to come out tonight and to share your comments. With that, we're going to move forward.
Just an announcement, there was an executive session this evening prior to the workshop to discuss personnel and legal issues.
With that, we're going to look to approve the minutes, and I'm going to take all of these together. So motion to approve board workshop minutes from November 22nd. Let me do them all together if that's okay. December 6th, December 21st. Any comments? All in favor? Yes, to speak into the microphone.
Just wanted to correct something on the minutes from December 6th. The motion for president, I actually made that first motion. It's just a quick correction.
Okay, is everybody okay with the revision to the minutes? Okay, thank you. All in favor with the revision Chris suggested?
Aye.
Anyone to post? Motion carries.
Just to help our board secretary out, there's a quick motion in a second. Could we, I wasn't sure who made those motions, myself, so if we could find a way as a board to easily identify that, I think we wouldn't have the time.
So you can announce the names, I'm happy to do that.
What's that?
I can announce names.
Oh, I wasn't saying, I was just saying, as a board, we could slow it down, but it's a good point, we need to find a way to help our board secretary out with these, but yeah, things would work.
Got it.
So, under the superintendent's report, yes. Under the superintendent's report, we request the board to approve Mr. Anthony Pigeon as our open records officer effective January 1st, 2022.
Second. Game in second.
All in favor? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carry.
And now we're to the point where we have the health and safety plan. We could have motions to off the plan, we could, in the absence of motions, the status would be the plan with mandatory masking would expire tomorrow. So this point is open to the board to see how we want to address this issue.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a voting item to implement universal masking January 11th, tomorrow.
Two things.
Yeah.
Two things. For sunshine purposes, the health and safety plan and indeed all comment about masking, you're good, you don't need to amend the agenda on this. What you are trying to move is to amend the health and safety plan, and the recommendation I'm going to make is that we be as explicit as possible. So we have section A, and I'm hearing then from you, a motion to require, to continue requiring universal masking until?
I didn't think we as a board had consensus on that, so I will just start with what was proposed. I'll start, but if, until, if you advise, I would say until February 28th, just as a starting point. It can be amended.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, until February?
28th is a starting point, because that's what was said in workshop, and I don't believe we finally got, that's what we started, I don't believe we concluded, the board or had consensus on that. But, thank you, Mr. Comper jumping in there. Could you please reiterate, so our, my motion now is not to amend, I do not need to amend the agenda, I'm strictly suggesting an amendment to the health and safety plan because it has already sufficiently been advertised. Thank you for the clarification. Second.
Comments?
I would support that motion, but at a much more limited number. As I stated during the workshop, my support of continuing with the mask mandate is out of a concern for staff and the operation of the schools only. I recognize there are many other concerns, and they're valid, obviously. That is the concern that would cause me That is the concern that would cause me to take the extraordinary stance of continuing the mandate in my, in my view. And following on that logic, is my hope, given similar waves seen in other countries with the Omicron virus, and that we are pretty early in this particular area as opposed to the rest of the country, that we may see a peak here right around now or in the coming week, and that certainly, and I would expect, I would look to extend masking only to that period of time when I think we'll be reaching a downward slope on the wave, and I think that'll be before February 28th. Of course, I don't have any special knowledge to know that, and I don't know that anyone, even our doctors in the room, know when that will occur, but of course, you could hold potential always extended. I've learned that you can generally move it backwards. And so, from my view, I already stated in workshop, I, I think, I think it is wise to do that, given everything that's been discussed. I recognize a number of different viewpoints about it. I think that is the wise course. I certainly respect those who see it differently, both on this board and the community, as I stated earlier. I think you've seen the spectrum of thought about it here tonight, and I'm sure it's reflected in our community at large. And I think, again, I continue to encourage folks in this room to understand, and I, I see all the emails from the community, I read them, and I firmly believe that everyone is coming at this from the viewpoint of what they think is best for kids. And so I think as long as we continue to keep that in mind, I think it helps us to see each other's as neighbors, to have some charity and grace for people to see this issue differently. I think this is a middle ground that covers, I think, both concerns. I know there's not much middle ground on this issue, but I am swayed by the high numbers currently, and I think out of my abundance of caution, it's reasonable to request a period of extension. So for me, that reasonable period would be January 28th, which would be a Friday, which would be three weeks from now, which is just Jeff Dimick's swag, and when I think the slope will be coming down. But I think that's a reasonable compromise, and that is what I support. Having said that, I recognize other views on this board as valid, both on our side or my side. Thank you.
Well, the mover and the second, do they have any interest in amending the motion to January 28th? Obviously, you would not.
I, I, I will absolutely do that. I'd like to hear more, you know, board consensus, or any, give other people the opportunity to speak, but I do not want to throw us to the rigmarole of having to amend and vote to amend and etc. I appreciate that, Mr. Con, I just know other people probably want to say something.
I mean, I certainly, and I mentioned it earlier too, I'm open to compromising, certainly. I mean, just to get some more information on what you'd, you'd mentioned, Jeff, I believe at our network, what I have heard is they are projecting this surge to last at least two weeks more. They feel that it has a peak yet. So, I mean, I, I'm okay with bringing it back from February 28th. You know, perhaps we could just do the beginning, a little bit more into February would be great, just so we can have more information before we have the same...
What if we set February 4th? Because that's two weeks for it to peak, and then two weeks for it to die down from the peak. That would be four weeks instead of...
I don't think your side has the bargaining power on the board. So, I don't know that mine is going to pass, I guarantee you, yours is going to pass because I'm not going to vote for yours. So, you know, hey, I mean, again, I'm just trying to hit down brass tacks here, I said the 28th, I, I certainly again, recognizing value of your opinions, and I'm not saying mine isn't any more valid than yours, but that's the number I brought up, I'm not willing to go beyond it. I don't know that we even have five for my number, I can guarantee you, you don't have five for your number, so I think the 28th, if you want any type of extension, that's where I put it.
What I appreciate about that date is that what we are facing this evening is we have parents and teachers and kids waiting up goodness knows how late on the center when this will happen. And what I appreciate about that, Mr. Duffin, is it's not the day after a board meeting, and if for some reason, as you said, as soon as those numbers start going down, let's look at this again, we have another board meeting on the 24th to do that. So that's what, I appreciate you saying the 28th is a Friday, and it gives folks time to adjust, get the message out, and figure out what they're going to do on the 31st if that is in fact, you know, surge, if we decide to remove that. So thank you for that.
So, second is also agreed, so the motion will now be...
I, I, I know, I've seen Mr. Mon over there, so I'd like to ride this out, I don't want to amend, you know, 10 times, so I'd just like to get all our cards on the table for, but I am amenable to not, you know, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mon.
I just want to talk about one thing first. You know, we talked about masks, and we have a lot of strife in this community, again, it was half and half. I see it at this point, and people who do and don't want the masks to be worn in, in schools, but point frankly, I'm probably the only one in this room who has had any experience in particulate counts and filtration and, you know, conveying of particles through clean rooms, semiconductor, pharmaceutical, medical device. And, you know, I, I just have to say, based on experimentations I've done previously as an engineer, knitted fabric masks are only incrementally at best effective in this environment, and that's a fact. I've experimented in it, I've done this in the past, and I can tell you that they are just not effective. Now, that being said, if you were to do some sort of account, and everybody that's in the school district and what they're wearing, I would anticipate without actual fact that most people are wearing knitted fabric masks that are washed, and the pore size and filtration methods for those masks are very limited, very limited, and the effectiveness of them is minimal. And we see it here, there are only certain people have surgical masks on, that's one of the reasons I wear it, is because the pore size, it's a, it's a, not a woven fabric, it's a, um, it's a randomized pore-sized piece of fabricated cloth that's not woven. And, you know, I've heard a lot about this now for a long time, and nobody's changing, and I think I want to take a sharp turn here and offer something that I think could potentially be a compromise for a community that is unwilling to move in either direction or to use some level of factual information regarding masks and filtration. So I'm wondering if this may make sense. You know, first of all, we're talking about the spike, I've been watching numbers endlessly, I've been thinking about it, watching them, analyzing them. And it's true that things are moving up, there are downward trends in some cases, there are, you know, what is the effect of masks in the school? Nobody knows. I mean, frankly, nobody knows. So, what if... ...is to enable students who would, and parents who would prefer to go remote on the 21st, is it? Change in the marking period, 20th or 21st? The opportunity for the public who really insists on having masks in a mandatory sense, I should say, not optional, but mandatory sense, give the option to have full-time remote learning. And give the option for people and their children for the optional method to pursue that endeavor. But I would say on top of that, since I believe we may have it, I'll have to ask Dr. Mann about this, is there funding for providing N95 masks to those who choose to have them over the woven mask? Because in fact, as I said, the fabric masks, masks are very effective. The N95 masks are usable and effective for hours on end through a day. It's also the case where many businesses and hospitals, at least last year, were using N95 masks for multiple days, not just one day. So what if we were to offer to those who choose, just as we have other offers to other students for other reasons, the option to use the N95 mask, enable any of our staff, administrators, teachers to have N95 masks available? And based on, as a matter of fact, one of the public actually brought up a chart regarding the combinations, the matrix of effectiveness between cloth masks, surgical masks, N95 masks, and the various combinations. You know, if you look at that matrix, you have a high of 25 hours of probably infinitesimally small option for exposure risk versus the other end of the stick, if somebody were to have an N95 mask, and the other person was optional and chose not to have a mask, there would still be hours of effectiveness to that mask. So now, the situation would be that we have a divided community, a divided country, lack of direction from many institutions, well above the school board, not making decisions and kicking the can down the road, and in fact, make a creative solution that takes fact, which, again, I mentioned, between the effectiveness of a woven mask versus N95. So I would propose, in closing, that we have potentially five more days to enable students to get to the remote learning, as was discussed in both emails and also tonight, and then after which time, we have mask optional, but yet have the funding for people within the school district to be able to have a mask on a certain frequency.
The only question I would ask, would a KN95 mask meet your definition of a N95 mask? Only because I have this recollection, I could be mistaken, of reading guidance about the actual N95s being more restricted to the medical profession, and that KN95 was the ultimate. I don't know that, but I have some recollection.
I, I will not, I will not say for a fact, I can investigate that, but I believe that those two, one is the industrial version, and there are different criteria for at least certifying it as the N95 versus the KN, but I need to check that, I'm not going to go on record, so that's a fact.
Yeah, because I, I know, recently I was in, you had to go to the hardware section of one of the hardware shops to get the N95, whereas the KN95 would be available, so I don't know the answer to the question at all, but I'm supposing it has a potential barrier getting lots of N95 masks as a whole team.
I was also going to add, just, um, the KN95s are known to be pretty effective in this situation, and I actually mentioned, I just brought it up, Mr. Mon, because I wondered whether Essor funds could be used to purchase masks. I don't know if it's...
That's my point, yeah.
...for, because, and, and I think we would have to make a choice that that balances, because I would be for that, I mean, of course, if we have funding for it, but I would, we need to strike a balance between something that adds a lot more effectiveness, you know, as you mentioned, but also you have to be, it has to be available enough so that we have enough of the resource. And also, you know, there are differentiate, there is differentiation between comfort level too. So then, you know, if you, if you utilize certain types of masks that are higher level for sure with respect to protection, then you do potentially bind yourself with a higher level of discomfort as a student or, or an educator. And the other thing I just really quickly wanted to mention, I appreciate your willingness to move the, move the threshold or move the bar. The only point I would make about the 21st versus the 28th is that while the 21st would give students the opportunity to move into a different option, as a district, we don't want them to make the choice to move, we want families to stay in the district and avoid even Spartan Academy because there's additional costs, plus we want to keep these wonderful students with our teachers, and in Cyber Charter, obviously, there's a huge financial impact. The other benefit is, it's not just, it's not just that students and families are worried, we want to keep healthy students in school, and we want to keep healthy educators in school. So I think the 28th would get us past the hump of the surge and perhaps potentially get both in one. That's the only other, yeah.
Well, regarding the availability of masks, I think we could ask one of our medical partners in St. Luke's to understand some supply chain channels, you know, to get that.
You don't even get that.
Plenty of things like that for a solution. Regarding the timing, you know, we started out this conversation in March, so now we're discussing January 28th based on Mr. Pigeon's comment. You know, at the end of the day, the fact of the matter is, the students are not wearing them, generally speaking, outside of these four walls. If we give them the option to, everybody has an option to wear a mask, and for those of which feel that there's added risk, the risk mitigation in the N95 mask is, in my estimation, significantly higher effectiveness than any of the methods that are currently being used by students. And if, again, by using Essor funds or what have you, we utilize that mechanism, I think that is a compromise here that is, number one, in my opinion, incrementally better for those of which who would wear the mask. Everybody still has the option to wear any mask they would so choose, but we have a little bit of coming together in this community to get beyond this and start talking about budget deficits, expansion of our facilities, and educational initiatives. It gets us to a point where maybe both sides can start talking again and interacting as a community while still providing a very high level, in my opinion, of mitigation by offering these at essentially no cost to those of which who may not be able to afford.
Steve, Steve, I'm going to interrupt you, so we get into procedural issues with this. So how often does a child get a new KN95?
And, and N95s, just so you know, you can't just get them, you require fit testing to get them.
Yeah, I understand, I think we're looking at KN95s, we're looking at, they're both fairly effective, so the KN, the N95 is the gold standard for the medical profession, I understand that, and it's...
Yeah, I mean, honestly, with, in the medical profession, most of us are using surgical masks.
Oh, surgical.
Because most of us, we don't get access.
Another logic issue.
Well, because of resource allocation.
I understand, another logic issue, like we, kids can sit in a classroom with a mask on, listening and learning and periodically talking, but then they go to the cafeteria and take their masks off and challenge, have each other up and eat. The logic is lost on me, and maybe we all need to go back to philosophy, when I want to think formal logic again when we're talking about these procedures. And maybe we all need to go back to philosophy when I want to think formal logic again when we're talking about these procedures. So if we're going to provide masks, because then I think it's a good compromise, Steve. I agree with you. How often are we providing the masks?
That's a good question.
A day? Here's what I would say. I would put the financial part of this aside. By saving one kid, you're going to cyber charter. The cost you get to buy, you could buy a full load or two of masks. So if the kid doesn't have one, give him another one. And so let's see if we could, I mean, I don't know the, we'll find, we have very resourceful people who can figure out how to get KN95 masks, if that's what the board of budgets do. We'll try to get it under ESAR funding, but we'll get them regardless.
And if you'd like, because certain people may feel that KN95 is too restrictive, the needed surgical masks like
We have those, we have those.
They're much less, so.
We have many, many.
They have the option.
But we're being clear that we're giving students a choice. So if they want to wear a higher quality mask that are more effective, it's optional for them and we'll provide that. But if they come from school in a cloth mask.
Mm-hmm. They can if they so choose.
Okay.
They can if they so choose. But this is an additional mitigation effort for those of which who are under the opinion that there should be much better mitigation. And as I said, from a factual standpoint, the cloth masks are very ineffective, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort to do a little give and take. I, when we talk about choice, the parents that would be moving their kids to Spartan Academy, which is not suddenly high teachers, it's not what they've been learning all year, it would change the course of what they're doing every day. So the parents that would choose the Spartan Academy, they would only choose it because they wouldn't feel like they had a choice. Maybe they have high-risk family members at home, maybe they have other family members that can't be vaccinated, maybe grandma, grandpa with them, whatever. They may move to Spartan Academy because they don't feel like they have a choice. If the roles were reversed and we said, if you're not comfortable wearing a mask, then you join Spartan Academy. I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm just saying as a matter of, if we said, if you're not comfortable wearing a mask, then you can join Spartan Academy where you can sit at home and not wear a mask. But then most of the people that are, that would be those people that don't want to wear a mask, they would say, well, I'd rather go to school and wear a mask than sit at home and not wear a mask. And then that is an actual choice because you can go to school, you just got to wear masks.
Okay, I would, I would propose.
That's honestly what a large percentage of our children have been doing all along. Not wanting to wear a mask, but going to school, putting a mask on, doing the best that they can. But that's what our students and parents have been putting up with now for quite a bit of time, even when the case rates were low. So our, you know.
The people that have high-risk family members and the people that are really don't want to come in unmasked, and rightfully so, I don't blame them. So, but those people then were just saying, well, tough luck. Even though the other people are willing to wear a mask.
Honestly, again, we're not saying
Everybody else is just, well, we're not going to listen to the doctors, we're not going to listen to the students. We're not going to listen to what we want to do.
This point, this point.
Wait, hang on, hang on, hang on. And that to me, like I said, I appreciate the give and take and I will do whatever, whatever we can, we can get done here. I'm just saying that it doesn't seem to be fair to a lot of people to be doing this like this now. And if all we're trying to do is get over the hump of this variant, I don't think that that's a lot for all of those people out there that are begging us to be masked. I just, I don't see why that's such a horrible ask. We're, if we go with Mr. Demick's plan, it's three weeks.
Okay, so.
Yes, yes, it is. It's us moving the goalpost again. But that, things are changing. We have to move the goalpost.
Okay, so a couple of things. First off, it's very clear at this point that this this whole ordeal is now become an endemic. I think that's the fact of it. The ability to control this is limited. We have a majority of the world, especially in third world populations, that have single-digit vaccination vaccinations at this point. And what that means is that those populations are going to keep being infected with mutations and variations of this. And it will continue to churn up different varieties, just like influenza, that's been happening since, what, 1918, I think? So we're moving into an endemic. So we need to start preparing and getting attuned to these situations. Coupled with the fact that the, the issues with Omicron, although more contagious, are much, much less a health hazard than what had previously been done. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just want to keep kids in school in front of teachers. Because to me, education, which is what we're up here talking about, I mean, regardless of what my occupation is, education requires both students and teachers. Obviously, the greater community participates as well, but and again, if those kids are, you know, very eloquently here today, a few of them have the courage to speak, which I always admire, and our students have the courage, and I'm going to they're very well spoken, which makes me feel good. They're telling you that masking is not what's impacting their social and emotional wellbeing. What's impacting them is the potential to have to say, huh, so you realize what would happen? You know, because we talk about social, emotional issues and mental health. But let's just imagine, right? You're sending your kids to school now in a mask optional arena. You know, how do you think the logistics are going to play out with respect to teasing? Or, well, you know what I mean, like, oh, you're not wearing a mask. You know, it could go either way. Kids, those who wear a mask, those who do not. In addition to that, they're going to be, you know, do you think a child that, you know, probably has a drill into their head that they better wear their mask, who is now sitting next to a child that is choosing not to mask, who by the way, may not be following their parents' directive because when they get to school, they can just pop them off anyway? Do you, how do you think that dynamic is going to work, especially at secondary school? Right? Like, you're going to have kids that don't want to associate, you know, like I feel like we're creating a situation too that is detrimental to the health and wellbeing of our children.
Wouldn't it be nice for our parents to explain properly that
I agree.
We can actually have
But that's not reasonable.
Well, okay, but we also have, we also have, we have an administration that could in fact, you know, help to instruct. Teachers who are there to teach, they could actually
I'm asking for one, I'm asking for Dan Moore 28.
Not working.
I'm thinking on more than, no. I, 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 let's just start the discussion. I would not, I mean, I made it very clear that to me, what's most important is that we're driving through the surge. So that, you know, because I do think to some degree, I am extremely hopeful, while new variants are going to keep coming, they're definitely going to keep coming because of what you mentioned. I think by the time this one gets through, first of all, I'm glad that the, that Omicron is the one that's so transmissible. It makes sense that it is because it doesn't kill you quick enough, right? So I am just, oh, that whole heart trick, right? I'm happy that with the combination of this vaccination and booster, I think we are moving to the point where we don't treat this as a, you know, such a, that's the only, only topic I feel that we discuss when it comes to education and the world itself, right? Like, we can be able to do things normally again. It, I think it's important for all of us. I do think that this hopeful will finally bounce us back towards normalcy. I just, I'm asking for some type of middle ground to
You've been asking for this now for a while now. Fact is
We have some agreement, I think, on the 28th, I understand that we both agree. I mean, it's not reliable.
I, I was proposing next week so that people have the opportunity to move into Spartan Academy, but we're, that was, that's, yeah, that's the 28th.
What I learned about the 28th, that Mr. Mann was talking about, teachers teach and surely they can help our kids make that adjustment if one individual is wearing a mask and another individual isn't. Surely we have people who can facilitate that interaction. And while teachers are very good at facilitating those kinds of learning lessons on the fly, that is one more thing we are asking teachers to do. And if, when masks do, I see the writing on the wall become optional, they are undoubtedly going to have to navigate that, the way teachers write, I see them in the audience. Some very informative, neutral emails saying, how do I address these? How do I answer these questions? I need to figure this out. I, you know, it's one more thing. I'm not teaching masks. I'm not teaching, we should not teach in social studies. What the 28th does is it gives them an opportunity, it gives all of us an opportunity to teach those lessons and know it's coming. It's one more thing for the teachers to do. I do not want to put one more thing on them, but I'm trying to make the best of a bad situation. And what you said, Mr. Mann, about coming together and offering the masking option in the KN95 and the N95, that's, you offered an option and I'm glad we are coming together and having a good conversation about this. And I think offering our students a higher-grade mask is a great step. But right now, giving us three more days of school to wear masks is that option dismisses the teachers we've heard from, the facilities of our education we've heard from, the medical staff. If we're going to come together, let's not be, let's try to include what we've heard folks say here tonight. And let's not just have three more days of instruction until masks go optional. Let's have it at least be the 28th.
Well, that's not, it's, it's eight days.
The 21st?
The 20th.
What did you say?
The 20th, because 21st
Oh, you're not losing me, Mr. Lyce, that is like Emily, you skipped ahead in time.
You said three days. I mean, we're talking about
Sorry, seven, you're right, you're right. I totally skipped the calendar. We, you're absolutely right. It's seven days instruction because we have four a week. Still, my, my, my point is that it's still time and we are coming together and we are asking, because I didn't hear a single person say, it's kind of getting over the surge, we don't quite know what's going to, that is a true compromise. That is making masks optional at what we think maybe might be the peak of the surge. It's giving close enough time to transition and switch and get used to the idea and revisit it. I don't see how that is not coming together and that is not just saying we give you KN95s. It's less, the 28th is a less dismissive option.
And then the teachers
Are there any other comments for folks who are not supposed to?
Uh, yeah. The teachers have been asking a lot of questions. And the 28th, like Emily had just said, would give, like, all of our principals enough time to make sure that whatever questions and outline concerns there are, that the teachers have a chance to get all of that answered. And you're right, we haven't heard from Bill or Nicole yet.
Dr. Mann, what's, what are the things that teachers need to prepare for that is instead of eight days, two weeks or whatever?
Well, we're not helping. So Kyle wants me to talk. I can't understand why we keep coming back and revisiting this. We are a totally different point now than we were last year and we were the year before that. We now have therapeutics. We have a vaccine. And for those that want to and think that it adds benefit, they can choose to wear a mask. If we don't start treating this like the epidemic and start treating it like flu, we are going to be living in this for the rest of my life.
Yeah, Bill, I think we do need to do that too. I do.
Can I finish talking? Please, I'm not done. I, all along, I've said, I am not in favor of a mask mandate. I mean, I can't change that belt tonight for practice, like, I am not in favor of a mask mandate. It's about personal choice. That's what America is built on. It's about choice. When the government was dictating from Harrisburg that we need to do this, right, we had no choice. As of the beginning of December, we've had a choice. But we keep staying with something and the definition of insanity is doing the same thing, expecting a different result. Nothing has changed, in my opinion, with or without a mask. We still have transmission, we still have cases, nothing's changed, honestly, with transmission regarding the vaccine. We keep talking about things, but they matter. Bottom line, regardless of what you choose to do or not, you may or may not get COVID. Wearing a mask or not wearing a mask is not going to make a difference. So let people have the choice to do what they feel is right for them. That's the only person that's going to impact. That's it. I'm not voting for a mask mandate. Haven't changed since August. Not happened.
What about the choice, truly, I mean, you bring up personal choice, right? What about the choice of parents who want to send their children to a safer environment? Being, barring the ability to get COVID, we're not going to get that many in that short amount of time. You're not, because we're in short time.
And if we have something called influenza that we've never, to my knowledge, in my lifetime, put a mask on for.
Which we didn't have last year.
We've had many, many viruses over the years. This COVID has been the most studied virus, infectious disease, in the last century.
For influenza, like we do for COVID. I'm not walking to CBS and getting an influenza test.
Now we are. We're having to test, having to test for flu, COVID.
Really?
Or S.
Have you tried to get an influenza test recently?
Because the sick patients that come into the emergency room,
And maybe now.
They are being tested and patients, because you can't tell the difference.
But it is, it is not easy to get an influenza test.
I'm not going to convince you, I'm not, you know, I think that's a little I'm not trying to convince you. What I'm trying to establish here is that what our common goal is, it's not masking. It's not that we are ever going to agree on the efficaciousness of masks. We wear masks as medical professionals throughout this whole thing and it's not because we're scared. We're required to do so because if we get sick, that is a knockdown in the workforce and there's fewer doctors and nurses and medical providers to take care of you. It's not because of fear. So bottom line is masks are being used well in the medical field to keep people sick. I mean, tell me, what I'm trying to say is our common goal, and I mean, it's getting late and I agree. I also am fatigued with having this debate over and over again because I've lived it now for two years. But the reason I keep fighting is because I want, now that we have been in school for this long, while I understand that most people remain fairly healthy, it is not. I get it. I have not, I've never disagreed with that, especially this period, and I'm excited that it's like that. However, it's still Nazi out of school for five days minimum. I mean, thankfully, it's not 10 to 14 anymore. But if that's a week of school, a week of school, especially at certain levels, secondary, you're behind. Zoom has not been going as well as teachers or parents would like it to go, right? Like, we've all heard the stories. That's why I was okay with a modified quarantine and the situation of masking because all those asymptomatic close contacts who in the end usually don't test positive were missing 10 days of school. That, I think that at least is a shared goal. I want to keep kids in school as many days as possible. Teachers in school as many days as possible. That's what I'm asking. The more our kids that are on Zoom, it makes it harder for a teacher to meticulously teach their lessons. Just think about it. Like, what is school? That, I mean, regardless of whether or not you think we can have a mask mandate or what have you, I know you don't believe that masks are decreasing the transmission in school, right? But masks are working in other settings. I understand that kids don't wear them right, that adults don't wear them right oftentimes. Yeah, I'd be all about getting KN95s for students if they want them because, yes, you can get them right now, but the kid size is just up and defined. They've been on that order. So, you know, I just, I just want kids. And we don't need to argue about the rest because I know at this point, people have made up their mind.
We still didn't hear from Nicole. She doesn't have to speak. She doesn't have to speak unless she chooses to. So Emily, where are you with?
Emily, you had to ask a question with your proposal. Are you masking our athletes?
Uh, I didn't specify. I said implement universal mask.
To universal indoors, athletes and everyone?
I mean, I'm having a logic problem again with wrestlers on the mat, wrestlers
I mean, I'm having a logic problem again with wrestlers on the mat, wrestlers without a mat, inquire, kids inquire, of course, thinking with a mask.
I'm sorry, no, I appreciate it. Doctor Weig asked me a question, just give me a second answer, please. I started this as a starting point, because I think the most important thing to me is to listen to the entire community and come together and continue masking to a certain point through a surge. If, Doctor Weig, you were suggesting to me that you could support a motion, if it differed or if there was different language, I am open to that, so I will mean that.
I just want to, you know, let our team, you know, so right now, wrestlers, my son was practicing there this evening. If your proposal goes through, you would mask, you would mask all the wrestlers?
I only put this on as a starting point, I'm looking for, I'm looking as a starting point. Are you suggesting that you would not support, that you could support this if it specified?
No, I cannot support.
You wouldn't support it, so if you're offering language that you could, that I could amend this to, that would get your support, I am open to that. Do you have language you'd like to offer that you can support? You don't have? Okay, well then, I just don't want to waste our time in this conversation.
No, I'm not being very-
Well, if we're talking about the athletics, athletics is where it's really been spreading and then passing it along throughout the school. Athletes have been shut down, so many of the athletes have been sick and they're just passing it around, and unfortunately, shutting down whole winter sports, because these kids are passing it around like crazy.
I'm going to jump in, because this is why I'm, like, talking about, we're specifically amending an existing document. So the motion right now, all the changes is the date from January 11th to January 28th.
Correct.
And another aspect of the health and safety plan is the date.
Correct, correct, yes, that was my starting point, Doctor Weig. I was just saying, whatever language you need to assure you, I'm willing to talk.
That same 30 minutes, that same 30 minutes after the vow?
Let's ask Mr. Khan, go ahead, Mr. Khan, continue down that main.
I mean, I didn't make them.
No, 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 explain to me what my motion means, I guess, is what I'm telling you, thank you.
You have, you have, subsection A, the health and safety agreement, which currently yields universal face coverage. And the only thing that changes in that with your motion is the date from January 11th to January 28th.
Correct.
Every other parameter of the case, I would say unchanged in that.
Correct, exactly.
The current year at the 28th?
Correct, now, I believe, I believe I was the 28th of February, but I said after this discussion, whatever the consensus is, I am happy to make it easy for us to reach consensus and alter that, but, yeah, I didn't get that, but... All this encompasses is a date, that's it.
What was your proposal for date, Bill? Yeah.
And then Mr. Dimick said he couldn't support that, so the two, the original motion that I made was for February 20th, from January 11th to February 28th. Mr. Dimick then, in an effort to compromise an explanation, and I said I appreciated that, was January 28th. And I said that I'm going to let this discussion play out, because I don't want to have to change this six or seven different times, but once we see the board is reaching consensus, and I am happy to have a conversation, Doctor Weig, that reaches consensus, but it seems to be a moot point this time.
Well, and, you know, not put your point on, but I think we might be at the end of the discussion.
Yes, yeah.
Four questions?
What?
Four questions?
So then, what I just, then one part of what motion you want?
Correct, so if we are at the end of conversation, then I see, because Mr. Dimick tried to compromise and said he will not support February 28th, and I know this is not going to pass without his support, then I will change my motion to state the date of January 28th, is that correct, Jeff? That you suggested?
I said January 28th.
Correct, so I will change it to the date that I know it seems as if at least four board members will support. And that is, again, just changing the date, everything is in place as it is now in the plan, simply changing and extending it to January, yes, January 28th.
And that wouldn't quite work for me, you'd also have to eliminate the after-school issues.
No, 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 that's still, the after-school issue is still-
Yeah, it's got that audience language and it's got 30 before, it'll be after.
No, no, okay, go ahead, so what-
I know what it does, I know what it has, so my point is, what I will support is January 28th, from the end of the school day, end of the school day.
Yeah, we currently have, correct, some of you are correct me wrong, but I believe our health and safety plan currently says from the beginning of the school day until, instead of end, it says 30 minutes after the end.
Right, I'll eliminate that and eliminate the audience language.
So in order to support this, you would eliminate?
In order to support this, I'd make basically, I would continue the mask mandate from January 28th during the school day period.
Okay, does that include kids being masked before they get on the bus, kind of a thing?
No, but we don't control what they do on the bus, that's fair, but no, it doesn't control-
No, I just meant, I just, just so we're getting clarity for tomorrow, for folks in the building. Do you mean the bell rings, you can take your mask off as you walk to the bus and then you put it back on through the hallways, etc.? I'm just trying to get clarity.
That's what I mean.
Okay, so, from the end of the school day, which is that sufficient direction? Mr. Khan, would any assistance from you?
Well, I think you have to the building.
Yeah, I mean, I, this door, I have some confidence in, I have some confidence in our student body, and, you know, that it wasn't going to be mask mandate and a bell ringing at the end of the day. Quite frankly, if somebody wants to take their mask off to walk out of the building, given our extensive discussion here tonight, I don't think it means a hoot if it's going to take them five minutes to get out of the building. So, my point is this, it's hard enough for me to get to this point. So, what I would like to do, I don't see any need for people, to me, outside, we're here about education, what people are doing, and their extracurricular activities and other things after this end of the school day, is definitely outside what I think I should be mandating. I don't think I should be mandated in the manner that it suggests. So, and I don't know that we got five people that are even going to go along with this, and that's fine as well. So, January 28th, the school day, I would be, I would be able to support that.
All right, so that would be then changing that same sentence, and I don't have the language right in front of me, so I'll confirm to the administration, if they understand what the health and safety plan would have to read. Sure, we'll, I mean-
Eliminating, I believe, it would be sufficient today eliminating any reference or specificity to audiences. And the 30 minutes, just from the beginning of the school day to the end of the school day. You wear a mask.
Until the 28th.
While you're inside, Mr. Dimick, I want to specify that we're not changing that, you can still take it off when you're outside.
Yeah, we are not, we're adding it up.
Good, 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 we're on the same page here. All right, so, from the beginning of the school day until the end of the school day, eliminate all requirements of audiences, eliminate all requirements in the school building outside of that window of time, from January 11th until January 28th. Doctor Serene, do I have your second? I just, go ahead.
Not really, not really, we're going to power, but, one question, do we have any large events on school grounds coming up?
Doesn't matter.
I know you're not going to support it, I'm just curious what people ask me. That's all.
That's all.
Except for athletics, and no performances coming up, that's fine.
Okay.
Second, and I guess, fourth.
All right, everybody? Okay.
Are we doing roll calls, or are we?
We're going to do roll calls.
Okay, thanks.
Jeffrey Dillon?
All right. No.
Mary Jo Lohner?
No.
Emily Neen?
Yes.
Steven Moore?
No.
Adam Annier? Yes. Will anyone want that?
No.
Miss Wall King?
No.
Chris Sweeney?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails.
So, hearing that, administration will, like the members will, implement a mask optional policy in the morning?
Well, can we make a, is there, can we make a motion then to adopt Stephen's plan? To make sure that the people that want to go virtual have time to go virtual?
Second.
And what I would say, regardless of, we'll order KN95 masks in large quantities, to, regardless of the outcome of tonight, I think that's a very good idea, that administration adopt the, Stephen.
Yeah, we'll just-
Yeah, and we don't need a motion, this is something that we're going to do.
But he wanted to extend past the 11th to the 21st, I believe that's what the motion was.
Right, can we, can I make a motion then to adopt the plan that Stephen brought up? So that the people that want to go virtual can go, can finish out the rest of the week?
Where were you 20 minutes ago?
Well, I was hoping to get us over the hump, but, and that's not the case, and that's fine, but then I'd at least like to see those people that want to go virtual have the opportunity to finish out the week or so until the next quarter starts to make a move.
Yeah, I mean, I thought I had a pretty good compromise, I had folks from the one side talking about masks, which frankly, I have experience with, with people from the other side that were talking about Spartech or Spartan Academy, whatever, and unfortunately, now we didn't take the olive branch. I don't understand.
So are you remaking on that in spite? Because it was a great olive branch, and I do agree, I was hoping to get us over the hump, and that was what I voted for. And since that's not going to be an option, I made a motion to follow up your plan.
And in fact, I was, I was going to add, I was going to add a motion, I was going to add a motion on the mask portion of the session. But, I don't think you can, I mean, he's not making a motion.
No, no.
If you want to make a-
Yep, Kyle made the motion to, same parameter, January 11th to January 21st is what Stephen said, right? And I seconded that. So, we have a motion and a second, which is adopting the idea that Mr. Maun brought up. Mr. Maun, as part of discussion, I guess Kyle was asking you, are you no longer in support of that idea, your idea?
I'm not understanding your revision for your motion.
It's just to extend masking and regenerating.
Okay, so remove the date up to January 28th.
21st?
21st, so that-
Regenerate 20th if it was started on.
Right. At the beginning of the third quarter, so that the people that want to go virtual and join Spartan Academy can do so for the third quarter.
So just for clarification, you're saying that it would still have masks on on the 21st, so that would be the start, and then after the weekend, we would start with a new, so we're masking?
The 20th is Thursday, so as of Friday, it will be done, right?
I think our motion was through the 21st, January 11th through the 21st.
What is the date of the start of the third quarter?
The 21st, the 21st is a Friday.
I think if we look at that Friday as the last day for mask requirement, going optional on that Monday, giving administration time to buy KN95 masks, with teachers to train people how to use them properly, and with the revisions regarding the end of the day and the start of the day, I think we're good.
Agreed, MJ, that's exactly right. So we would still be wearing the masks on Friday, the 21st, and optional on the month. Correct, thank you, MJ.
Do we have a motion on that?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, yeah, yes.
Again, second?
David second, any more comments?
Any more comments? Good, okay, roll call.
Jeffrey Dillon?
Yes.
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 Chris Sweeney?
Yeah. Yes.
Will anyone want that?
No.
Marcus LaRosa?
No.
Mary Jo Lohner?
Yes.
Their motion carries.
Very, just ask, there's one or two comments to the superintendent on that issue.
Sure, sure.
I think some of the emails you were copying on, Dr. Maun, but some of the people did not, I know, from, some of the teachers you received over the last week or so. I do think there is quite a bit of confusion as to what their goal is when masks go optional. I think they feel like they may have to enforce, you know, there are going to be phone calls from mom and dad saying, I want my child to be wearing one or not wearing one. There's a whole litany of questions that number, and since a lot of people don't generally like to email the board, the fact we had to number emails and that they were raising a lot of the same issues. I know you're, I'm sure, thinking of this already, but I think the building principals or others maybe need to work with their staff to answer some of those questions, and my view would be that they have a very limited role in that. But of course, I'm not an administrator, I'm not asking to implement my role, but either way, whatever it is they're supposed to be doing, I think it needs to be clarified.
There is, there is great, great confusion across the district right now. And actually, I spoke with Dr. Kim earlier today, and our goal is, waiting to hear what we heard tonight, we plan to meet tomorrow, try to develop a book charter guidance to send out to the teachers. Also, what I would say is that as we move to mask optional, the whole idea of quarantine and, I was, if you're talking about just developments, we are having students now come in with a note saying, I'm returning to school, telling that school, I was out with COVID, I think. We had no idea, so there was no opportunity to contact trace. We've been doing modified quarantines, running out of spaces at the middle school for kids to have lunch, because they're in modified quarantine. Case numbers are ramping up faster than we can actually do the calls. And so, the, you know, what was very solid, we were talking about this kind of last year, like very solid protocols in place. The whole idea around time for quarantine is now down to five days. By the time you find out, get a test, which takes a day and a half, and a weekend comes by, you're back anyway. And so what I'll tell you is that all those mitigation efforts are fully unwinding right now. Through no fault of the staff, it's just as we have tried to implement it, you know, reality has cut up. So, absence, and now, definitionally, on the 20 seconds or whatever that morning is, we're going to have many, many more close contacts, because what, people without masks, and the definition is that there are going to be close contacts where they were not before. So, the natural progression, from just a practical point of view, is that we are now have to move toward treating this as an endemic, because we're running around trying to do endemic level mitigation with endemic circumstances, and it's just not going to work. And so that really was the cause of this confusion. So now, naturally, as we move in the direction the board had set, we then now have to, I think, focus on how do we take the direction that we have from the board and use it to manage and mitigate to the extent we can, if that's possible, COVID in our buildings, because it's surely here. And that is, again, to our, along the lines of identifying sick students and making sure they're home, and really dropping the idea of contact tracing, because that really is not a meaningful thing anymore as we move in this direction. So, yes, to all points, but part of the problem is we have so many rules that can't be enforced at this point, we have to kind of revamp and think this again, think this through again.
Thank you for that, very helpful. One second, issue that was raised in a number of emails was also the toll being taken on teachers that are attempting to complete Zoom, with folks out and also teach to the kids in front of them. I know that's somewhat on your radar, Dr. Maun, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I do think, my, my opinion would be that we, you know, I think they're in a position, like our healthcare workers, where this has been quite tasking, I think, and reading the emails that I saw, and it doesn't surprise me, that our teachers, while they may be directed to simply turn that on and film, that's never good enough for our teachers, and so they're still attempting to do the semi-hybrid approach to life. And so, I know that's on your radar, Steve, but that's-
But it's also something the board should hear about.
Yeah, well, I don't know that that's something we should be requiring.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that, it is my view that students who are out on foreign, which, again, Well, no, what I'm saying is that, um, it is, it's my view that students who are out on quarantine, which again, we, we're not going to have anymore. Students who are home ill with COVID, all right, can access online learning. But students who say, look, I just want to, I, I'm uncomfortable coming to school. I prefer to have, um, online learning. They have to go to the, to the Spartan Academy. We cannot burden the staff anymore because it, it completely unwinds the instruction that is going on. Say that we're going to go back, because that is going back to hybrid. If, if we say anyone other than who is out on COVID is, has, uh, are in-person learning virtual available to them, then we are back to hybrid. And, and the whole senior class will be done and we'll, we'll, we will unwind in a very bad way. So I think, and, and others will have maybe different opinions, I, I recognize. But to the, to the extent that we expand online in-person learning with our teachers, we will be grinding them to the ground. We'll be diminishing overall the quality of instruction, and, uh, we'll be creating incentives that I think are misaligned with students' best interests.
I, I agree. I, I just clarify, even beyond reaching out to a new hybrid version, what I would also suggest possibly to the administrations that we review, to your point a moment ago, now that quarantine is relatively limited. Um, and this becomes endemic like the flu or other things in the past. We didn't necessarily record, I guess we didn't ask our teachers to be doing that level of teaching even to those people who are just normally ill from school. And so I think as we move into this next phase, what I, what, what I'm seeing is I think teachers are even trying to, you know, broadcast to those few kids that are quarantined, which is again, noble, but I think, uh, that's causing their own instruction in, in-house to, to diminish. I think it's causing burnout amongst them.
It is.
And so at least I want to provide my, my point of view, which may be not, maybe differed by your other people on board, but, uh, I, I would be fine with you beginning to move towards alerting teachers that that may not be what is any longer necessary, and that they focus on their in-line, in-room classroom, uh, instruction as they have in the past. And I think that burden would, would alleviate a lot for them.
I agree. And the only, the only jump that caused some hesitation there is creating an incentive for sick children to come to school. Uh, and that's, at this point, is the only thing that we're actually from, uh, fully subscribing to that, that point of view. But ultimately, yes, that's what we need to get. But kind of like masking, I'm prepared to go in remit. But I think at this point, just the concern about if we are managing this as an endemic, finding incentives to keep sick people home and, uh, well people in the building, maybe just not yet, but I could be wrong. I, that's just my question.
Can I ask a question too about that related? Um, so obviously, we have, um, the requirement that you be home sick with COVID.
Yeah.
Um, for that Zoom option. Um, how about, how are, because, you know, we, we talked about modified quarantine, and that was more for, if, if it's more for low-risk contact. So, um, what about the high-risk contact? Are we, how are we treating them or planning? I mean, obviously, as we move towards endemic, that will fade away, but I'm thinking that that should be.
I think so too. I, I believe, I think the high risk would, would be part of our.
I just wanted to make sure.
And, and the other thing that, that I will say flat out to anyone who asks, is that Spartan Academy, like the, their worst cousin, Cyber Charterers, are ineffective in, in delivering instruction to kids. And, and there's absolutely no doubt that it's an order of magnitude or two better to be engaged with our teachers than it is to be with these, these places. If there's one thing we learned from the pandemic, it is that online learning does not work. And so we don't want to delude ourselves in thinking that this student, this Spartan Academy is anywhere a substitute for this. No. High medically at risk, all of that, certainly in some narrow instances, but it is not a good option that we are offering. Just, it is the only option that we have at this point.
I will also say for the, in the teacher's defense there, that once we cross the line that we are treating this endemic as an endemic. So I don't know what that, is, is that date, the date that we're taking off the masks? I don't know. But at that point, like, I, I don't think you can have it both ways. I don't think you can tell the teachers that you have to keep Zooming, even though now we're treating it like the flu, that, uh, there, there has to be an end point there, I think, for the teachers.
Well, right, there does. And that's, that's our next discussion. I think, I think in our next meeting, we have to look at the endemic policy that I sent out and draft more. Uh, and have a good discussion on that. And then either then or the next meeting, we have to talk about how do we realign our instructional practices to reflect our consideration of this as an endemic.
So just to clarify, from now until the twenty-first or that Monday, everything that we have, like, everything that's available to a student at home, either quarantining or with COVID, nothing has changed other than what has happened tonight. I find myself confused with, by what you just said, just by listening.
It's your, it's your cross. If, if you're home sick with COVID or if you're quarantined, you get the, the Zoom from the teachers. Yeah. That will not change.
That will not change.
No, that will not change.
But, okay, great. Thanks. That was my question.
We won't, we won't be expanded upon either.
No, they'll not be expanded upon.
That will not change.
But that will not change.
And then in the coming, in the coming time that we're together, we have to talk about a mitigation strategy with respect to treating this as an endemic and our instructional strategy in treating this as an endemic, which will be a migration to the extent we can from online to in-person. And, uh, you know, we, we certainly talk about the financial risks associated with Cyber Charterers. It's a complex discussion that we've been thinking about quite a bit, but now it's time to act to that.
And thank you for, thank you for clarifying. Thank you for clarifying. I, I just, one of the issues I know for everyone is clear communication of what we mean. And so I, I'm completely moving away from that. It's exactly what I thought you were saying.
Tomorrow, Dr. Pimple, when I was trying to come together with some ideas.
Could we also please, um, oh, I'm going to say upwards of about twenty teachers, twenty-five teachers, sent us emails. And some of those teachers had a lot of questions about how to handle certain things. Can, um, can we make sure that those questions get into the right hands so that, that, that these questions are being answered?
Yeah, the idea is that even if one person is asking them, many people will answer them. So we'll have to do it in a sustainable way to provide information to our teachers about what it, what it would be about. But they're trying very hard, and administrators are trying extremely hard to just get the word out, but there's just lots of people playing out with this. And there will be more, but every day will be better than the day before. That's about what I'd like to hear.
Thank you, everybody. Let's move on. We have, uh, number six, the Special Education Student Services Independent Contractor Agreement. Maybe the motion? Second.
Second.
Second line. Your first. Dr. Wayall. Any comments, questions?
Hate to do this. I, I was actually a little confused as to what the Spanish language evaluation was. Is this something that we normally, am I reading wrong?
It's something, it's something we normally do at student base, based on the need of.
Required.
Got it. Thank you.
We want to have it.
We require for, it's definitely a focus for the board. Thank you.
In favor? Pose. Motion carries. We have another contract. Um, I'm going to do both of these together. This is an education contract for service with Colonial Intermediate Unit Twenty to remove. Um, and the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit Twenty-one Network Management Agreement for January first, fifteen thirty, for technology. I'm going to take those together. Any comments, questions? Both in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Business of Finance with a bunch of topics here, property tax refunding, lack of new property tax group, most for tax. The Southern High Measurers on the Board Chairman Associate. Uh, a revision to the District Tax Collection Committee delegates. Okay. And the Treasuries Report and Investment Reports for October and November, uh, of two twenty-one. And last, the approval of the bills list. Go move. Second. We got a second. This is Dr. Trivia. And, uh, we have any comments or questions on any of those business items? Yep. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Steve, you have a question. You go ahead.
I just was wondering about the construction fund bills and how is that part of a progress payment? Because I was talking about Butts, Architera, Cohen.
Architera, Architera is the architect for the city project. That's ongoing. Cohen, I think, was geotechnical testing. Geo, not geotechnical, geological. Darnold, not Darnold. What is it?
For the, I, I understand.
Geological testing. Geological testing. What was the other one, Mark?
Uh, Cohen, uh, Architera and Butts, which I know, but I was just wondering about.
Butts was probably old, uh, instructional man.
Okay.
So those are, the one I'm going, one is Butts.
Okay, fine, thanks.
We voted. No, we didn't vote. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed then? Let's take all the human resources. I just together. We have a number of classifieds for your appointments. Professional employees making an athletic event worker. Substitute appointments. An administrative employee retirement date change. An administrative employee resignation date change. Administrative employee start date change. A student teacher placement. Non-certified staff appointment. Mentors. An extracurricular coaching volunteers. So, human resources, that'll move second. Second. Any comments or questions on human resources? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And last but not least, we have some other business here. Let's take number ten, A, B, and C. Sorry, sorry. These are A and B. This is a committee nomination.
Well, we don't, we don't have to do these separately since.
Yeah, yeah. So the first is the ACMC committee. We can't hear your mic.
The mic's off.
My, my switch. Okay, I just want you to talk more directly into ACM.
Anybody could say, committee, the workload is not heavy. Uh, you work with the association, uh, to try to, um, help govern the, uh, classes that are in the board.
I've done before, Dr. May, I've been on this sort of.
Very good.
Only because I don't want any of the other more onerous appointments that may come later.
Well experienced.
Ah, I want to.
I will nominate Mr. Demick for that post.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Mr. Demick, you're appointed if there are no naysayers. Okay, LCTI representative nominations. We have two board members for the LCTI Joint Operating Committee for the term from January first to December thirty-first.
Of twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, the twenty-second. I'm getting tired. Okay. January first, December. Correct.
That's what I said. Steve, you have time to put that in, because it, it would be ideal, I think, given your background and given your passion.
Sure. I, uh, always ask the busy person to do more things to be more busy. So, you know, I think, I agree. I, you know, I'm, I've served on two different technical schools already, so why not?
I nominate.
So when did they meet?
Uh, the first meeting starts at, well, because you'll probably decide to pay for your consent. You'll probably be assigned to a committee. Mrs. Parsons and I, I've sort of done the education committee. That meeting started at five thirty. And then there was exec session, and then there was the general meeting. Um, so it was a couple of hours on, is it the, is it the third Wednesday of the, the third Wednesday of the month? Up in words.
The only thing that concerns me is I will be returning to travel this year. And when I travel, I go out Tuesday morning and I come back Thursday. So. We have the ability to name someone off the board as a representative, or by bylaws.
Yes, we can.
I would be, I would rock and do it. I just will miss some of it. That's why we have two.
Okay, so if you give it a try. Did your mic on there?
Sorry.
We're trying hard. Okay. So what I. If I take off my mask, you can all hear me just fine. Oh, is that what it is? Okay, Bill's going to try this for a couple of months. We'll, it'll see how it goes with, uh, his travel schedule gets, uh, involved and gets time to time. Community members who might be able to represent us. Okay? All right. So we've got two nominations. Motion for Steve and Bill? And you got a second? Okay, everybody's in favor? No, anyone wanting to ask for comment?
We had a motion and second for the minutes. Uh, motion. Who made, who made the motion for Bill?
Yeah, we got to speak up.
Who made the second, who made the second? Nicole?
Second, Nicole.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
Say your names when you make the motion in the second. I think it's going to help with the reporting and I don't have to then track it. And I think we're, um, take new business for information only. This is student field trip request. Anything there? Yeah, you can read, um, we can read about the removal of all paid five science resources. So at this point, unless there's any other business, we're going to need a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Comment? Comment? Uh, okay.
Oh, 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 we.
Do we have public visitor comments? There's no sheet. Do we have any? You'd like to speak. Okay, before we adjourn, we're going to allow you to speak. Go ahead. And can you give us your name?
I just signed the sheet.
I'll fill it in for you.
Yes, okay. All right, I know it's late. I promise I won't keep you long. Um, again, I just, I'm coming up tonight to speak as the union president. And it was reassuring to hear the board talk, um, about getting some answers to questions. So I guess I'm just here to appeal to you, as I said in my email last week, that you have an association and you have approximately two hundred and thirty members who are willing to work with you. So I would certainly hope that by the time we go mask optional on the twenty-fourth, that we have answers to questions because we want to do what's best for kids. So I'm standing before you tonight because I have two hundred and thirty members who are wondering what our next steps are. We want to be part of the solution. We're willing to be part of the solution. Um, and we want to do what's best for kids. So I, I just wanted to reiterate that because as you have received lots of questions, so have we as union leadership. And we're doing our best to navigate through all of those answers. Um, and we are looking forward to having those answers by the time we go mask optional on, uh, January twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has a public comment? Okay, with that, let's go back to the German. The second. Any comments?
Thank you all. Thank you all. Good job.
Good night.